Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Mr. Vice Mayor, calling the June 3rd, 2020 Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board Joint Meeting to Order. The first item on your agenda today is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, Chief Soto, or Assistant City Manager, Acting City Manager, rather.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to roll call for the Reno City Council. At this time, we will ensure that all council members have been unmuted on our end. We ask that they please unmute their phones on theirs during roll call. Breckus? Shewer?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Garden?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Shivi?
Here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, and Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. The next item on your agenda today is general public comment, as does not relate to specific agenda items. And to begin, I will turn this over to our mayor, who has a few comments before we begin.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I apologize, I'm trying to get on Zoom, but there's a lot of technical difficulty, so maybe you can help me with tech support after this. So, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I hope we have a lot of people on the phone, certainly. I want to clarify, you know, there was a lot of confusion last night, so I want to clarify the intent of last night's curfew. It's really important for me to do that. I received information from our police department and a request by our chief to implement one out of safety, so I want to make that abundantly clear. My goal is to protect you and our city, and maybe we don't always articulate or execute those things in the best way possible, so I really want to apologize for that. I think that's important for you to know. Again, we're human, and we don't execute things the best, so I apologize on any confusion. You know, I want you to know, it was in no way intended, ever, to limit anyone's freedom of speech. That's not certainly the intent. It's important for peaceful protest, it's important for us to use our voices for change. That's what the goal is for our council. You have a good council here. I want people to know that. This council also, you know, we were the council that put in the Human Rights Commission, so we understand, you know, that cities across America, including ours, need to change. But you do have a very good council that will always listen to you. And, you know, we want to be your partner, so make sure, you know, your voices are heard. That is important. You know, people are scared, emotions are running so high, so we need to have compassion right now. Everyone, and I mean, everyone is in mourning for Mr. Floyd, and that's important, again, to use our voices for change and for justice. And, listen, I can replace property, I can't replace people. So, I want you to understand that. Your lives are utmost important for me and our safety, you know, in our city. So, I want to just, so I do want to clarify some things. I'm going to come out at 1:00 with better clarification, because I apologize, I think there was a lot of confusion, you know, on both sides. And so, at 1:00, I will make sure that we've modified that, you know, curfew, so that people understand why we put it in place and what the parameters are. And again, it's important for your voices to be heard. That's not the intent, and it's across the country, we're seeing, you know, so much heartbreak across this country. And, you know, considering the events of Las Vegas and across the country, you know, we are really concerned, you know, for your safety if that's what needs to happen. And if I don't do certain things, and we lose lives, I will never, I won't forgive myself. So, I need you to understand that we all, we're all in this together, we all love Reno. We have an incredible community. People came out in droves. I was down there at 6:00 in the morning, and there are a couple hundred people coming out for our city. So, know that there is a lot of love here. There is not hate. So, I want everyone to please come together, love one another, be good to one another, reach out to, you know, our neighbors and people that are hurting right now, because there's a lot of it. But I also want you to understand, we have a really good council here that's always willing to listen. And sometimes you might not agree, but we're still willing to listen, and a lot of times, change comes from that. So, I appreciate everyone who's here, I appreciate my council members. But again, I want to make sure that we clarify everything on this curfew, so that people understand what the true intent is. And I don't want that to get lost. I don't want that to get lost in a sea of good that is happening and the change that is happening across the country. So, thank you, everyone. I appreciate you. And, Madam Clerk, I'm going to try to get back on Zoom, and I'll reach out to tech. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, Acting Chief Manager Soto would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Jason Soto. To further, in furtherance of what Mayor Shivi just brought to you, we have been working overnight with Mayor Shivi and our council to really address some of the concerns, many of the concerns, most of the concerns, that have come in from our community in terms of curfew. And what we didn't want to do, what we don't want to do, is we don't want to shut down businesses, we don't want to stop people from going to the parks with their dogs, going on runs or walks, enjoying a night out at a restaurant, or spending an evening in the casino. So, what we're going to do, with the mayor's permission, and I believe she's going to clarify this a little bit later today, is to actually lift the curfew. However, we will, at the Reno Police Department, maintain our rights under RMC Section 834.060, which is Emergency Regulation and Control, specifically subsections 2 and 3 prohibit or limit the number of persons who may gather or congregate upon any public street, public place, or any outdoor place within the area designated as an emergency area. And really, what I'm being specific about is people that have criminal intent and are committing criminal acts. We simply will not allow that. And if so, if you do, we will enact Section 834.060, Subsection 2, and you will be arrested. Also, in Subsection 3, it gives us the ability, as the Reno Police Department, to barricade streets and roads, as well as access points onto streets and roads, and prohibit or restrict vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. Again, if we see unrest and people that are committing criminal acts, it simply won't be tolerated, and they will be arrested. With that, I hope that provides a lot of clarity for our community. Again, I understand, we understand, that all of you have lives, and you want to live your lives, and you want to do so without regulation. In terms of the limit of the number of persons, the governor has put into place 50 or more persons is unallowed because of some of our COVID guidelines, so we'll be using the number of 50 for these types of gatherings. Also, we're only going to be using this specifically from the hours of 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So, from 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM, Emergency Regulation and Control will be in place until further notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Acting City Manager Soto. I'll turn it back over to our city clerk, as we welcome people into the meeting virtually for public comment, and I'll turn it back over to the city clerk now.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We do ask for everyone's patience. As everyone is aware, there was extensive damage done to Reno City Hall, as well as our chambers, so we are doing our best with the technology confines that we currently have. It should be noted that we have more than 180 people signed in for the Zoom meeting today, however, not all of them wish to speak. We do, however, have upwards of over 60 persons submitted for public comment. And so, in that, I would like to remind all of our public commenters that you will be permitted three minutes for your public comment. Please address the mayor and council as a whole. As a reminder, your comments are to be respectful. Any threatening comments or derogatory information which can be construed as a threat may result in you being muted and removed from the electronic meeting. Again, we do ask that you are respectful while in this forum. I will be calling three names at a time, in order to ensure that the next speakers are ready. We will unmute you on our end. Please be sure to unmute on your end. If you've phoned in, you need to dial *6 in order to unmute. Again, we will be going in order. Three at a time will be called. Please be aware of your comments. I believe Acting Manager Soto has a few more things to say before we begin.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, in terms of these large gatherings, I want to really focus and emphasize people that are creating lawlessness and having unrest. That's simply, will not be tolerated by the Reno Police Department. We do recognize and realize that there are events going on throughout our entire community and our town that don't have any of those intents or effects, and with Section 834.060, they'll be able to carry on with those events without any type of police intervention. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to our public comment. As I stated before, we will call three persons at a time, so please be prepared for your time. As I mentioned, we have more than 60 people signed in for public comment today. First to speak is Jared Stanley, followed by Megan O'Farrell, followed by Alan, excuse me, Alannan Burgland. Jared Stanley, you are first.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Welcome to the change.
Hi, my name is... Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you're live.
I don't know if I'm... Thank you. I just wanted to... I'm sorry. I wanted to make a comment about the curfew firstly. I'm going to make a secondary comment after that, but the thing I wanted to say about the curfew, and especially the rationale given by the Assistant City Manager, seems to presume violence and lawlessness over and above the exercise of free speech, and that seems very frustrating. And I think part of what was shocking in the initial announcement of the curfew, that was that it really presumed that violence was going to happen. And my understanding is that things had not occurred since Saturday night. And so, I think the message that that conveyed was that the city just didn't care about the exercise of assembly and free speech. And so, that was the comment I wanted to make. I felt very disgusted and disappointed in the city at that moment. So, that's my comment, really, about the curfew. The thing I wanted to add, that's, I think, related to this, and I think everything that we're talking about is really related to white supremacy. The fact that, that, I basically really just want to say that we need to think about city priorities and question, why are we, why are we funding the police at the levels we are, when we know that there are so many other struggles that are happening in terms of city budget? And I really want to think, as we're dealing with the budget cuts that are going to be coming down the pike in terms of COVID-19 and the economic crisis it's related to, that we really need to think about the way that we're funding the police in this community, as part of who is being cut and what is the first to be cut in the community. And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan O'Farrell is next to speak, followed by Alannan Burgland, followed by Monica Thompson. Megan, you may begin your comments.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Megan O'Farrell. Thank you for being here today and allowing me to speak. I wanted to discuss the travesties of this past weekend and the current policing policies in Washoe County. Over the weekend, our community came together in solidarity and outrage over the killings of Black and Brown people by police officers all across our nation. We came to use our voices to show the people right here in our direct communities who have had loved ones utilized by our own police forces, that we see them, and that their families and their lives and their pain matter. And we were met with the same violence and terror from our very own police forces. When our community came together to share their pains, share their stories, share their demands for justice and reform, they were met with curfews, tear gas, liver bullets, arrests, and terror. And so, I have to ask, when the opportunity was presented to heed the cries of our community's pain with empathy and understanding, where were the voices of our city council? The faces and our voices of our leaders were missing. We needed our leaders to take a stand against blatant police violence, and not just listen, but show the people in our city how we can do better, how we are going to elicit real change that affects our community. And instead, we were met with the use of force that mirrors the injustices across our nation. We were shown that, in fact, right here in our city, our police are able to use force with no restraint. Many of our own policies for policing are out of date and do not meet the needs of our community. When our leaders say they care about change, but continue to allow these policies to be maintained, it is a great disservice and failure to our community. Our leaders need to address all of our current policies around policing and put together a serious plan that involves redirecting monetary funds to sources that are actually going to be building and uplifting our communities and not terrorizing them. I hope that you all get an opportunity to listen to the words that people are going to share with you today, and understand that we are not people from out of town, we are not people who are a part of this larger thing that doesn't involve our communities. We live here in this town, and we expect more from our leaders, and we expect your faces to be in those places, and to show us what you stand for. That's all I have to say. Have a great day.
Thank you, Megan.
Alannan Burgland, followed by Monica Thompson, followed by Jamal Eden Barokey. Alannan Burgland.
Thank you. I feel so honored to be here with so many inspiring community members ready to speak today, so I want to keep it quick, so we can actually hear them. It's Alannan Burgland, for the record. I am here in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement and the community of Reno, which has committed to being anti-racist. Anti-racist as individuals, anti-racist as businesses, and as organizations. City of Reno and elected officials need to step up and commit to the same. We need to hear you say it, and we need to see you doing the hard work. Police reform must be on your agenda at the next meeting. Many of us in the audience have seen the list of lives lost at the hands of Reno and Sparks Police, as well as the embarrassing outdated use of force policy used by the RPD. It is a disgrace. The people are going to send you valuable resources to educate themselves. Check your email, read up. We understand that the pandemic has caused serious shortfalls in the budget, and there are hard decisions to make. Be ready to learn what investments actually ensure the health, wellness, and safety of our people. That is not police. Commit to ending police brutality. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next to speak is Monica Thompson, followed by Jamal Eden Barokey, followed by Sarah Richman.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for having me to speak today. I'm speaking with you today about specific actions the council, in partnership with the community, can set in motion to address police violence against citizens of color in our community. Currently, none of the 2019 priorities of this council address widespread policing problems that are the result of systematic racism, racial inequities, and outdated law enforcement policies that dictate how police engage with the citizens they're meant to protect and serve. So, I'd like to talk today about why the council should make community-led, data-informed police reform a Tier 1 priority in 2020. With the limited time today, I like to focus on one RPD policy in particular, that is in need of immediate reform, and that is the current use of force policy that hasn't been updated since 2009. According to Campaign Zero, in 2014, police killed 253 unarmed people and 91 people who were stopped for mere traffic violations. The use of police force projects found compelling correlations between the use of police force policy and the rate of police killings. The project reviewed the use of police force policies of America's 100 largest city police departments to determine whether they included meaningful protections against police violence. Unfortunately, RPD was the only police department to receive a no across the board for protections against police violence and their use of force policy. And out of the 100 largest city police departments research, the city of Reno had the eighth-highest rate of police killings per 1 million population from 2015 to 2016. A similar study conducted by Mapping Policing Violence found from 2013 to 2019, Reno was the number-one city for the highest rate of police killings of Black men per 100K population. The use of police force projects concluded from the research that efforts to push police departments to adopt more restrictive use of force policies and the accountability structures to enforce them can substantially reduce the number of people killed by police. I request the council look into immediately reforming the RPD use of force policy, with the goal to reduce the rate of violence and killings inflicted by police here in Reno. Council can refer to a model policy provided by Campaign Zero. The policy was based on review and analysis of effective use of force policies across the nation. The policy includes evidence-informed restrictions on police use of force that are designed to significantly reduce police violence in communities. There are so many more police reform opportunities that we do not have time to discuss today. Those additional opportunities have been provided to council. I ask that council make it mandatory for all police reform initiatives to be community-led and data-informed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next to speak is Jamal Eden Barokey, followed by Sarah Richman, followed by Pierce Moran.
Hello, my name is Jamal Abdirahim Barokey, and I'm a longtime Reno resident, and I thank you all for being here, and thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to share my perspective. I've been very discouraged and disheartened by the lack of solidarity shown by this council. That's evident even in these opening comments. There were comments made about the people in the morning who were there to clean up Reno, and no comments of solidarity around the people who were peacefully protesting the night before. And so, it's really disheartening, and I want to echo what everyone else has said already, and that is that we need to put police reform on our agenda for the next city council meeting, and we need to start to really look at all of the things that have been happening in Reno over the last decade, and how it disproportionately affects marginalized communities, and how there has been really little done to address those things. And the things that have been done have typically been warped and used for other instances, most recently with in effects to housing, and how there has still been not really a whole lot of progress towards affordable housing within the McCarran Loop, as was intended. And additionally, I think that in time when we are in a very difficult situation with more and more Black and Brown people being killed by police, it is particularly problematic to give the RPD, who has a very high rate of murdering Black men, license to stop anyone who's now out in public. And that is why the curfew was so inappropriate and is so inappropriate, and that the fact that the police now can just stop anyone who's on the street who may be engaging in whatever is deemed unlawful. To rely on, you know, almost 20-year-old laws and regulations is ridiculous at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Sarah Richman.
Madam Clerk, can you please do me a favor? Will you please announce their name after they speak as well?
Yes.
And make sure you have those public comments to submit to council members. What was that gentleman's name?
His name was Jamal Eden Barokey. Next to speak.
Okay, thank you.
That's Jamal Abdirahim, J-A-M-A-L-E-D-E-E-N, Barokey, B-A-R-G-H-O-U-T-I.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks for spelling that out. Perfect.
And, Madam Mayor, I can note for the record that after the meeting has ended, in accordance with open meeting law, additionally, we will be uploading all of the public comments received and all of the webinar registrations, so that will be accessible to the public, and then council will have all of the contact information as well.
Thank you.
Next to speak is Sarah Richman, followed by Pierce Moran, followed by Cameron White.
Hi, Sarah Richman, Mayor Resident, Ward 3. The murder of George Floyd by Minneapolis Police has sparked national outrage about police brutality against Black people and other people of color. Nationwide, we are beginning to have honest conversations about racial inequality and how to hold ourselves accountable for ending it. We need to extend this accountability to the Reno Police Department. In the past five years, officers of Reno PD have killed at least 33 people. In 2018, they killed more Black men per 100,000 people than Las Vegas and Phoenix combined. This is unacceptable. We need accountability and reform now. I urge the city council to enact measures to ensure city and community-driven police reform in Reno, and I offer some examples of how that can be achieved. One, amend Reno PD body camera procedures. In 2018, Reno PD released a general order regarding the new deployment of body-worn cameras. However, there is no text in the order that mentions repercussions for officers who fail to activate their cameras. This order needs to be amended for increased accountability. Officers who fail to activate their cameras must face consequences, including suspension and termination of employment. Two, require implicit bias training for all police officers. The Reno PD Officer Training Manual, a 111-page document, mentions only three times the awareness of personal and racial bias as a core competency. The city of Reno must require implicit bias training separate from general officer training. The training manual must be made available to the public. Three, establish an independent civilian oversight committee on policing. Currently, members of the community may only file complaints of officer misconduct through Reno PD Internal Affairs, who investigate claims at their discretion. An independent committee will do more to hold police accountable for their actions and provide more transparency. Cities across America have established review boards over the past 20 years, and blueprints for this type of program exist. Atlanta has perhaps the most comprehensive program in the country and should be a model for how Reno proceeds. Finally, amend the city budget to reduce funding for Reno PD. The 2020-2021 fiscal year allocates over $77 million for police. This is approximately three times the amount allocated to culture and recreation, community support, and public works combined. What does that say about the city of Reno's commitment to its community? Divesting money away from policing and investing in community-oriented programs will do more to reduce crime and improve quality of life than an overfunded police force ever will. This year's budget was approved on June 1st. However, it isn't too late to call for an emergency amendment. At a minimum, the city council needs to reprioritize its commitment to its community in the 2021-2022 fiscal year. You have the power to enact real change today. People's lives depend on it. These suggestions are only a few ways in which the city of Reno can create police reform that makes Reno a place where everyone can feel safe, regardless of their skin color. Your community is counting on you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Sarah Richman. Next to speak is Pierce Moran, followed by Cameron White, followed by Aishi Barokey.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pierce Moran. I wanted to speak on some of the events that have happened recently. Obviously, we're all saying a lot of the same things, and I don't want to go over the same things, and I want to yield the rest of my time, so people can speak. I would like to say that before Saturday night, I hadn't witnessed a lot of these things in person, and I was very disappointed in some of the ways that this was handled. The violence and the lack of concern for oversight that I witnessed among our police force was absolutely hard to watch and terrifying. The suppression of civil liberties and freedom of speech are terrifying, and I think that we need to be very, very cognizant to put this as our agenda for the coming year. Obviously, body cameras have been a huge issue, use of force has been a huge issue. All of this needs to be looked into and revised, and I am currently educating myself more and more every day in order to be on top of this. But witnessing what I witnessed on Saturday night, some of the things, as soon as the curfew was enacted, was absolutely terrifying, and I would love to see change, because this is a community that I love, and I do believe that we all deserve better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pierce Moran. Next to speak is Cameron White, followed by Aishi Barokey, followed by Imagerz.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Yep, great, thank you. My name is, thank you, my name is Cameron White, and I've lived in Reno for the past nine years. And I'd like to thank all the community members who've joined this. nine years, and I'd like to thank all the community members who've joined this meeting and have already provided salient comments, as well as briefly voiced my concerns over some of the following issues. Number one, I want to stand in solidarity with the protests and support for Black Lives Matter. Police brutality is a major issue, and the recent murder of George Floyd by the Minneapolis Police Department has brought an unprecedented number of eyes to the issue. While the incident didn't happen here, that doesn't absolve our public servants from the responsibility to protect the marginalized in our community. Two, how is setting a curfew of 7:00 PM supposed to protect the citizens of Reno? Instead of curfews on citizens, how about restraint on the police department? Chief Soto's concern at the beginning of this meeting for businesses being affected while simultaneously listing off all the ways that they'll be able to clamp down on protesters and potential troublemakers is incongruous and disappointing. So now there's concern for large gatherings to prevent the spread of COVID-19? Where was that concern during the open-up protests or the issue and stick with clear health guidelines during the past few months?
Mr. White, I think we've lost your feed. Can you let us know if you're still there or have you finished your comments? Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next public commenter, and if we can, we'll come back to Mr. White if he can just reconnect.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we just need to take a quick pause here. Our system has dropped the call, so we are not connected to our speakers at this time.
The number you have dialed is not in service.
Okay, we'll take a brief pause for technical issues.
Enter your meeting ID followed by... Enter your participant ID followed by...
You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak. This meeting is being recorded.
Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time, we will return to Cameron White and allow him the rest of his time as we paused it when we lost the feed. Cameron, we will unmute you on our end. You may continue your comments. You have a little more than a minute and a half remaining of your time.
Mr. White, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure... Thank you. I'm not sure where I got cut off, but...
I know. Just take your time and regroup, and if you need additional time, I'll certainly allow it. Just pick up wherever you think was best and start there.
Great, thank you. I would like to ask, how is setting a curfew at 7:00 PM supposed to protect the citizens of Reno? Instead of curfews on citizens, where is there restraint on the police department? Chief Soto's concern at the beginning of this meeting for businesses being affected while simultaneously listing off all the ways that they'll be able to clamp down on protesters or potential gatherings or troublemakers is incongruous and disappointing. Far more offensive to me than graffiti and broken windows in downtown is seeing a militarized force of police deploying tear gas and flashbangs to push people out. In the last two years, why has the RPD killed unarmed black men at twice the rate as the national average? How much money could be better distributed to social services that address underlying issues if police budgets were reduced? It's become clearer and clearer that our law enforcement paradigm needs to be radically overhauled. Many suggestions have already been made during the comments today. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd like to cede my remaining time. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron White. Next to speak is Ayesha Barhouti, followed by Imagerz, followed by Ariana Shalapali.
My name is Ayesha Barhouti. I wanted to just say a few words. This body has a history of not being transparent in its actions, of canceling meetings in an effort to squash public participation, saying one thing and doing another, serving the needs of one slice of the population of the city, tokenism and performative allyship, caring about how things look as opposed to how they really are, refusing to take action unless and until it becomes a public embarrassment for you. It's time for city council to be a little less concerned about pleasing the comfortable members of our community and a little more concerned about serving those cities, those the city has actively hurt through years of bad policy inaction and systemically looking the other way. Your constituents, because let's not forget what you really care about, will remember that when the chips are down, you had a chance. You abdicated that responsibility. Serving on the city council means you serve everyone in your community, but none more than those most vulnerable among us. Where is the outrage? You can get defensive on social media, but what good does that do your community? Being a keyboard warrior doesn't help anyone, and your self-aggrandizing is obvious. Do something. Stand up. Speak up. Sharing memes is not advocacy. It's performative. Intimidating community members is not advocacy. It's bullying. Diving belligerently into comment sections of every argument is a bad look for this body. Take action. Do something useful with your time. Do something productive. You wouldn't have to spend nearly as much time defending this body if it actually took action on any of the pressing issues before it. You can either respect existence or expect resistance. I cede my time.
Thank you, Ayesha. Next is Imagerz, followed by Rena Spansell, followed by Ikkyah Kandala. We can hear you. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'd first like to say this is my first city council meeting, so I apologize if I don't know what the timing is or anything like that. Just let me know. The city of Reno's language in yesterday's release regarding curfew was irresponsible, even in the light of the supposed clarifications being offered. Adding to the irresponsibility, the curfew was only announced by the city on social media and via a press release to the media. This created a clear risk to the citizens who were not monitoring or did not have access to those media outlets. As we learned Saturday evening, the city is able to send a citywide blurb to cell phones. Where was that? I'd also like to personally thank city council member Devin Reese for his efforts to clarify language last night on his own social media. I can't say the same for the rest of the members nor Mayor Sheevy, and unfortunately, clarifications not in official writing are unhelpful. According to Mapping Police Violence, Reno is ranked eighth in the nation for police violence per capita. Eight, the curfew statement released by the city gave police the right to stop any person on the street, increasing the risk that an interaction could become violent. I'd like to point out to everyone that the only reason the officers involved in George Floyd's death were terminated is because of a Minneapolis PD policy called duty to intervene. The policy reads, subsection A, sworn employees have an obligation to protect the public and other employees. Subsection B, it shall be the duty of every sworn employee present at any scene where physical force is being applied to either stop or attempt to stop another sworn employee when force is being inappropriately applied or is no longer required. This policy needs to be adopted in Reno Sparks and Washoe County Police Departments as a first step. It will give citizens at the very least a certain sense of safety that individual officers will not support continued use of force by other officers. Without this, citizens will continue to have little trust in departments like Nevada Law Enforcement that have been proven to be above the national average in regards to violence and deaths. The mayor and police chief, Jason Soto, aka Acting City Manager, have both admitted there is no evidence of current danger to the community, but there is. The danger is repeated unchecked power of our police departments and clear conflict of interest when it comes to our officials. The people in these public comments have now provided multiple opportunities for change, and to do anything other than adapt to those opportunities and apologize to the community is embarrassing and disappointing. I'd like to request that the city immediately adopts a use-of-force policy for the accountability of our law enforcement and the protection of our citizens. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Imagerz. Next to speak is Rena Spansell, followed by Ikkyah Kandula, followed by Kelsey Hoffman. Rena, you may begin.
Rena, your mic is live. I was asked to unmute. I cannot hear the council chambers. My name is Rena Spansell. I'm going to say my comment. I want to share that it is horrifying and unacceptable that public-employed officers from Sparks, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and Reno Police Departments have murdered black and brown people at twice the national average. Why is this governing body not treating this as an emergency? It is horrifying that last night and this morning, those same officers performed a sweep of peaceably assembled folks without houses on Commercial Way after first removing porta-potties and a dumpster from the site. I demand that this publicly-elected body defund and divest from their police body. I demand that this body realize that its critical leadership role in these times, the opportunity that is here to advance the future. This governing body has that opportunity. They have an opportunity to take a stand with actions on the issue of institutionalized racism within this city and the police institutions head-on. I demand justice for all those killed by police in this city in the form of inquiries into these ongoing murder cases, defunding and demilitarizing our police force as budgets come up, as my comrades have mentioned, and immediately ending sweeps and curfews that target marginalized folks, especially those folks who have been pushed out of their homes in this time. This ends now, and you, city council members, have the opportunity to lovingly end it. I cede my time.
Thank you, Rena Spansell. Next to speak is Kelsey Hoffman, followed by Michael Moberly, followed by Alexandra Munson.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, Kelsey, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, good morning, everyone. My name is Kelsey Hoffman. I just want to thank council members for allowing the community this time to speak about this crucial issue, and I'm honored to hear what everyone has to say. I won't speak for long. I just want to pose the question, why is our chief of police and officers who have coordinated this curfew, why are they not here to hear the public's response to what is going on? And these public comments may be shared, and they're made public, but I just feel like there's so much of a disconnect between what you all are saying, which has some really great points, and what is happening on the ground. In January, an unarmed black teenager in Sparks was killed by Sparks Police, and he was on suicide watch. His mother called the police because she was at fear for his life, and instead of police being well-trained to support and manage the situation, this person was killed. I want that investigation to be made public, and I want more transparency from our police department. Thank you. I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you, Kelsey. Next.
Ms. Hoffman or Kelsey, before we go forward, I just want you to know that Acting City Manager Jason Soto is also our police chief. Chief Robinson is acting out of his normal assignment, but you are hearing, the comments are being received by our police chief, who is copiously taking notes and has heard many of the comments. And is prepared to act on them. Yeah. Thank you, Ms.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Next to speak is Alexandra Munson, followed by Justin Matthews, followed by Katie Worall.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alexandra Munson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you so much. Hello, city council and mayor. I appreciate you giving this opportunity for the community to speak our minds. I am Alexandra Munson, and although I've only lived in Reno for three years, this has quickly become my home, and I absolutely love living here in the community that I share. With that said, our community is hurting. Our country is hurting. Trust has been completely and profoundly severed between our community and the police. I'm deeply troubled by what I'm witnessing around the country and what I'm witnessing here in Reno in our backyard. I'm troubled, but I'm not surprised. See, I'm one of the millions of Americans that from a very young age were told to be extra cautious around police and officers. Black communities all over the country are once spoke fundamentally under policed and over policed. They do not respond to our calls for help, and yet when they are called upon us, excessive, brutal, inhumane force is used. This force leads to physical and psychological injuries, arrests, and deaths. As many have already spoken today in this forum, an unacceptable amount of black deaths has happened in the hands of police here in Reno. In addition to that, Nevada incarcerates people of color at a higher rate per capita than anywhere else near the United States, and imprisons African-Americans more than three times their population of the general population. George Floyd was but one of the long, terrible history this country has in lynching black people, and today we say no more. So my time here is short, so I'm going to propose a tangible, long-term solution that I would love for you to engage in and look at, to address this policing problem, as well as what the city of Reno can do right now during this movement. So first, I want to present a term that you may already be familiar with called community policing, and I'm going to quote just specifically from the Bureau of Just for Framing and Action. And community policing is, in essence, a collaboration between police and the community that identifies and solves community problems. With the police no longer the sole guardians of law and order, all members of the community can become active allies in the effort to enhance the safety and quality of neighborhoods. Now, I'm not going to go in more details about this. You have adequate information at your disposal to look at this long-term solution in terms of changing the fundamental principles of how our community is policed. And I firmly believe that at this time, we have to have a profound paradigm shift in how our communities are policed. But however, what we can do right now in terms of keeping our communities safer during this movement is we can have a commitment right now, today, from you, the city council, that no military-style weapons will be used in the event of protesters. In addition to all of this happening, African-Americans, we are more disproportionately affected by abuse of the police, and we are more affected by COVID-19. It is wildly inappropriate to use force of this kind of tear gas in the midst of a pandemic.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Munson.
So I call for the city council to not use excessive force. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Justin Matthews, followed by Katie Worall, followed by Michael Moberly.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, I live in Midtown. I've been living there all my life, and I pretty much consider my community, same with downtown, I had friends there who were there during protests, and I pretty much agree with Midtown that we need support for Black Lives Matter. And to tell you, it all begins with the police, and I think Reno should really follow Camden, New Jersey. They went very far with police reform. I mean, they can do more, but they've done a lot better, better actually. For example, they actually recruit people from the community. It's actually more diverse now than like our police force. Like, I was at the uprising, and I saw pretty much no black officers. It was pretty much whiter than a freaking Rod Stewart concert. So basically, we just need to have more oversight in police force because being a police officer isn't a job. It's like, you know, it's not just a job. Like, it's a responsibility. And also, I think it's BS that, like, pretty much you open up the casinos, but people can't have a vigil. And like, using coronavirus as an excuse is also BS because it's pretty much a sardine can in those casinos, but we can't have a freaking vigil too. Yeah. Basically, that's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you. And you sure let the other woman finish, by the way?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Matthews. As a reminder to all of our public commenters, they're each given three minutes for their time today. In order to be fair, we still have additionally another 45-plus public commenters to go. Katie Worall, it is your turn, followed by Michael Moberly, followed by Anna McKay. Katie has taken herself off the call. We'll put her back in the queue for later. Michael Moberly has also removed himself. We will look for them to come back on. Anna McKay. All right. Anna McKay, you will be next up to speak. We will unmute you on our end. You may begin your comments. After you will be Sarah Coyle, followed by Olivia Orea. Ms. McKay, you may begin.
Can you hear me?
We can. The floor is yours.
My name is Anna McKay. My name is Anna McKay. I'm a student who's grown up in Washoe County. I've lived here all my life. I am in solidarity with the anti-racist and thus necessarily anti-police Black Lives Matter movement. I would like to bring attention to the long, long record that Reno PD and Sparks PD have of brutalizing and killing our community members, including the murder of an unarmed, suicidal, young black man, Kylie, by the Sparks Police Department. Kylie was shot to death on video in our own community. There has been no public investigation into this murder, and the involved officer, Brian Sullivan, has faced no consequence. Our brother Kylie is not the only person whose life has been taken without reason or accountability by our local police force. I and all the other protesters who have been exercising our rights in peaceful ways am outraged by the events in Minneapolis and the police conduct there, but we are all just as outraged by the disgusting and inconscionable behavior of our local police force, which must end now. This is a local issue. We demand for the release of the investigation into the death of Makai Lee, and transparency and justice for all the peoples killed by RPD, SPD, and WSCO, with all officers involved held criminally accountable. For RPD, SPD, and WSCO to completely cut ties with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, for Washoe County School District, UNR, and TMCC to cut ties with Reno and Sparks Police Departments, for the demilitarization and disarming of Reno and Sparks Police Departments, for the Reno and Sparks Police Departments to be defunded, and additional funding to be provided for the Mobile Outreach Safety Team and other social work and community support programs. Police reform must appear on the agenda for the next meeting, and the public must be given full transparency on the actions taken by our city council to protect our community, which is the bare minimum in the face of demonstrable patterns of violent murder, especially enacted on people of color in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna McKay. Next to speak is Sarah Coyle, followed by Olivia Orea, followed by Roseanne Wilson.
Hi, City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Sarah Coyle, and I'm from Ward Four. I want to open my statement just by reading the second paragraph of ACLU Nevada's response to this curfew. They write that "the order fails to identify a present state of civil disorder to warrant even one evening of a forced curfew." In fact, the order expressly states that there are no currently known threats to the Reno community. That's now been amended to this vague wording of "outside agitators," and I just want to highlight the fact that pretty much every other government body has been making this claim that these agitators, as you call them, are from outside, and this is something that's been thrown around since the Civil Rights Movement in the '60s. In Minnesota, initial claims by St. Paul Mayor Melvin Carter and Governor Tim Walz that every person arrested or at least 80% of protesters were from out of state turned out to be false. Just four people arrested between Thursday and Saturday turned out to be from out of state. And in Reno, we've adopted this claim now. I implore you to offer concrete evidence to support this, to warrant this curfew, this imminent danger. It's just unclear. So I yield the rest of my time. That's what I wanted to highlight.
Thank you for your comments, Sarah Coyle. Next to speak is Olivia Orea, followed by Roseanne Wilson, followed by Julian Knowles.
Over aggressive and militarized responses to public demonstrations increase the risk of public and officer injury, escalate conflict, and suppress speech. While working with communities to execute strategies and plans for peaceful demonstrations increases public and officer safety. A lack of accountability for police officers related to the use of lethal or excessive force, racial and ethnic profiling, discriminatory policing practices, and sexual violence and misconduct violate civil and human rights. These can be remedied with required oversight of police departments by independent investigators, monitors, and civilian oversight boards with full investigatory and disciplinary powers, as well as the power to set or recommend changes to policing policy based on complaint patterns. Oversight bodies should represent all sectors of the community, including those disproportionately impacted by policing. There should be effective and impartial investigations. Departments should swiftly, thoroughly, and fairly investigate complaints using non-law enforcement personnel with investigatory authority when possible. Clear protocols should be established for determining who investigates and prosecutes officer misconduct, including officer-involved crimes and shootings, such as in the case with Rolando Vizuela, whose assailants were given a paid administrative leave in Reno, and with Micah Lee earlier this year, whose assailants have not been held accountable yet. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Olivia. Next to speak is Roseanne Wilson, followed by Julian Knowles, followed by Todd Hayes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Wonderful, thank you. First, I would like to say thank you for the council retention. I speak in support of the Black Lives Matter movement, and as many people who have spoken today, I have similar requests. I would, brutality as an item on an upcoming agenda very soon, and as well to build an independent civilian oversight committee for the police department. I think that city funds, the city budget, should be amended to invest more in teachers, medical workers, social services, and our housing insecure. And finally, I just want to say that I think sometimes this can feel like a daunting task, and I really think that the greatest leaders know how to bring other people's voices to the table, and this is a situation where we have many powerful voices and resources that exist, and I ask the council to bring together outside voices, voices that are not often heard, and resources to solve these issues. Thank you, and I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments, Roseanne. Next to speak is Julian Knowles, followed by Todd Hayes, followed by Emily Hobson.
Hi, good morning, everyone. This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting, especially over this unique digital platform, so I just wanted to highlight that today I'm speaking as the son of two law enforcement officials, a mother who was an FBI agent for over 30 years, and a father who was in the military, was a police officer in three police departments for nearly a decade, and an FBI supervisor for over 20 years, as well as the head of counterterrorism in nearly 13 countries in the Middle East. The first thing I want to address is rescinding the indefinite curfew, as it violates our First Amendment rights, specifically our right to assemble peacefully. Jared Stanley mentioned earlier in this meeting that curfew presumes violence. The first few hours of the protest were entirely peaceful on Saturday. We've even seen peaceful protests maintained late into the night in cities like Denver. If our community doesn't wish to provoke violence, and our police department won't provoke peaceful assemblies with aggression, I just ask, why is there a curfew instituted? As the city is opening up in light of Phase Two, many people are returning to their day-to-day jobs, so if more members of the community are back to their eight-to-five jobs, and our curfew begins at seven, how can this curfew not be seen as a direct violation of our right to assembly? I also urge the city of Reno to consider instituting a civilian review board to oversee police misconduct. My dad described to me that being a cop as, quote, "the only person in the world who can be judged, jury, and executioner, all while being protected by the law." 99% of police killings from 2013 to 2019 in the United States have not resulted in officers being charged with any crime. This is a complete lack of accountability across the board. In 2002, this motion was rejected by the city of Reno. Almost 20 years later, I urge you to institute a civilian review board so we can hold our police officers to a much higher standard than we currently are. Lastly, I ask that we try to allocate more hours to de-escalation training instead of weapons and defense training for our police department, and investing in community outreach programs so police officers can be more connected to the people they protect in underserved communities, and especially communities of color. By defunding the police department and reallocating funds towards education, we can help improve on the fact that the state of Nevada currently ranks 35th in the nation for academic achievement and 50th overall in K-12 education. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments, Julian. Next to speak is Todd Hayes, followed by Emily Hobson, followed by Erica Minaberry. Yes, you have the floor.
I'd like to stand in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement. I would like to see our city resources diverted towards social workers rather than military police. I think the curfew putting in danger to access people in our community, the large homeless community that has no access to social media, no way of knowing there's a curfew, and the police out there picking them out over by Fourth Street right now. It's a really sad scene, I was just over there walking, and I don't know what the solution is for these people, but we can't just keep displacing them. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Todd. Next to speak is Emily Hobson, followed by Erica Minaberry, followed by Davy Parks.
Good morning. My name is Emily Hobson, and for purposes of identification, I'm a professor at UNR. The actions of the Reno police on Saturday night and since have been unacceptable, and the curfew was a naked tool to criminalize the homeless, people of color, and protests. I'm glad that the curfew is being ended, and it's a witness to the power of dissent to create change, but I continue to firmly oppose the order to prohibit public gatherings as just announced by Chief Soto. In the midst of a national and local crisis of police terror, in the midst of a global pandemic, and rising economic inequality, the city council is choosing not to implement change, but rather to advance more policing, more state violence, more homelessness and poverty, and your claims that these bans are not intended to suppress speech are naive at best and manipulative at worst. I demand that you rescind all bans on gatherings for political speech, that you all publicly apologize for considering such policies, and that you significantly defund the Reno police, redirecting funds towards public health and the needs of low-income people, as noted by everyone else speaking in public comment, and I think you should pay attention to the unanimous voice you are hearing this morning. Reno police has a long history of repression of people of color and poor people. Reno police actions Saturday night did not create safety. They were themselves violent. They instigated violence, including against peaceful protesters. The arrest of protesters and their continued, ongoing incarceration in county jail places them at serious risk of coronavirus. And just last night, the curfew was used to harass people on Wells and Fourth and downtown, even as wealthier, whiter people along California were left in peace. So Reno is using state violence to suppress democracy, just like we saw a couple days ago at Lafayette Park in Washington, DC. So Mayor Sheedy, Vice Mayor Reese, and others on the council, if you allow police to continue your oppression, your claims to support a change ring hollow. I demand that you publicly apologize for considering the curfew, that you announce support for public protests, and that you decisively defund the Reno police. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Emily. Next to speak is Erica Minaberry, followed by David Parks, Davy Parks, excuse me, followed by Jessica White.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor, Erica.
My name is Erica Minaberry, and I am here in solidarity with both the Black Lives Matter movement and the anti-fascist movement. I have looked at the municipal code regarding the state of emergency, and while a riot is in the definition of an emergency, RMC Code 8.34.050 Subsection B states that the mayor is to terminate the state of emergency when the state of emergency no longer exists. The riot is over. People in a state of unrest is absolutely not unlawful, but establishing this curfew is absolutely unconstitutional. When the city council says that they are listening, and the people are saying that police brutality is causing unrest, and the response from the city is to increase police presence and silence us, it sends a very loud message that you do hear us and you do not care. When you ban groups from exercising their constitutional rights but allow for people to go to casinos, it sends a very loud message that the city cares more about profits than it does about people. But the people are listening. With just six days left of the local primary, I encourage all constituents listening who have not sent in their ballot to vote down every sitting member of this city council until they stand with us in solidarity and show us that they care more about our voice than they do about profits. Jason Soto, Hillary Sheedy, Devin Reese, Jenny Breckus, Naomi Durr, Oscar Delgado, Bonnie Weber, and Naomi Jordan, we will be at the plaza tonight at 7:00 PM. I am bringing my children to play at the river in the plaza that my taxes have paid for. I invite you to join us and stand with us in solidarity, show us you respect our constitutional rights and your constituents. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
For your comments, Erica. Next to speak is Davy Parks, followed by Jessica White, followed by Francesca Martinez.
I would like to thank you for allowing the community to come together today to speak on depressing issues facing the black and brown communities of Reno and Sparks. I'd like to begin by calling attention to a few points that have already been stated by those who came to speak before me. The Centers of Mapping Police Violence has rated Reno as the city with the eighth highest of police violence rate per capita in the nation, and that the Reno Police Department kills African-American men at twice the national average. These facts send a clear message to my black and brown family, and it tells us that we are not welcomed in this city. In the face of these facts, it is utterly apprehensible the manner by which the Reno City Council, alongside with the Reno Police Department, dealt with the Black Lives Matter protesters, the manner by which the curfew in the city of Reno was announced endangered workers and working-class immigrants who are more likely to work job hours, which would cause them to drive and walk the streets of Reno after curfew, which increased their risk of encountering the police department. Mayor Hillary Sheedy stated that, "I want to make it clear, we will not tolerate any violence during this time." So I called a Mayor Hillary Sheedy to stand by that and to make sure that justice is administered in proper and appropriate fashion to the unarmed black men in the city who've been murdered by the Reno Police Department, and I call for the defunding of that same department. With that, I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Davy. Next to speak is Jessica White, followed by Francesca Martinez, followed by Sarah Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor Sheedy and council members. My name is Jessica White. I've lived in Reno for 11 years. On Saturday, I sat watching police and National Guard marching on downtown Reno, deploying tear gas on Reno citizens. To be clear, I wasn't afraid of broken windows or the protesters, I was afraid of the officers who marched upon Renoites in the name of keeping the peace. The death of George Floyd is one of countless deaths of people of color at the hands of police, and Reno PD has a well-documented history of this violence. I believe that this curfew is going to lead to further aggression from the police, particularly against people of color deemed to be dangerous. The right to protest is vital, especially during these times, and making Reno citizens unable to gather does feel like vulnerable voices are being stifled. It is a time to mourn, and it's a time to discuss change, so why are we not allowed to do so? Our community is its people, and treating Reno citizens as criminals waiting to happen is dangerous. Not taking the safety of black people in our city seriously is unconscionable. Please take police brutality seriously. Please work with Reno citizens to protect black people, people of color, and vulnerable populations. Please hold RPD accountable. The lives of black Renoites and POC Renoites depend on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Jessica. Next to speak is Francesca Martinez, followed by Sarah Peterson, followed by Brian Mangione.
Hello, and thank you, City Council, Mayor, and members of our community for being here. I'm here to propose an update to the Reno Police Department's use-of-force policy, continual police training, and see police reform in our city. 22-year-old Ben Hall was shot by Washoe deputies back in 1998 after an accidental call was made to 911. Upon seeing Hall with a fireplace poker in hand in his own home, he was shot three times by police, resulting in his death. Considered an accidental killing, Chief Deputy Ray Wright was quoted in a Las Vegas Sun article saying, "We certainly will review this incident, as we do all major incidents from a training standpoint. We'll look at things we do differently. There are always things, issues, and techniques that we discover that are better ways to do things. If that's so, why was the last time the use-of-force policy in RPD general orders revised back in 2009? These policies should be reviewed, reflected on, and new policies implemented whenever there's a new opportunity to do so. The process of revision should be continuous, addressing all cases with officer-involved shootings and deaths. Our police should be more accountable for their actions." According to a report by the Bureau of Justice in 2006, police officers receive only 11 hours of cultural diversity and human relations training, eight hours on community policing strategies, and eight hours on mediation and con- strategies, and eight hours on mediation and conflict management. This is in contrast to 111 hours received on firearm skills and self-defense training. Police training should be continued throughout their careers in order to be able to deal with a variety of situations that call for informed, critical analysis. Our police should always strive to rid their racial biases and be more knowledgeable about how to approach nuanced situations in order to provide protection for all members of the community with equity. I want to see Reno do better. I do not want voices silenced by a curfew. I want Reno and our police department to directly acknowledge its room for growth, but without recognizing these issues, we cannot move forward. This is why I'm also here to echo to the council to make police reform initiatives to be community-led and data-informed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Francesca.
Assemblymember Sarah Peterson, you're up next. Welcome to the chambers. And I apologize, your screen was cut off, so I thought it was Assemblymember Sarah Peters, but I thought you were next in the queue. We're having some technical difficulties. Hold on, please.
Sarah Peterson, we're showing on our end. You are unmuted. You will need to unmute on your end. Vice Mayor Sheedy dropped off the call, so we'll put her back in the queue. Next to speak is Brian Mangione, followed by Bob Folkerson, and then we will attempt to get Sarah Peterson back on. Brian, the floor is yours. You may proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I kind of mirror the same sentiments as everybody has spoken before me, and I just think that this curfew is just a gross oppression of our ability to kind of peaceably show how frustrated we are with the system. And if you guys agree, you would help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Brian. Next to speak is Bob Folkerson, and we will try Sarah Peterson again, and then our next speaker will be Michelle Baker.
Hi, good morning. My name is Bob Folkerson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada, and we reject any attempt to punish peaceful protesters through indiscriminate curfews that will result in more racial profiling and brutality in Reno. That might not be the intent, but that's the message. And when I read about the curfew at 3:00 this morning, I walked down there about 30 minutes later to do my civic duty to try to break such an unjust law, and I walked all over downtown throughout the plaza, and I saw one police car between approximately 3:30 AM and 5:00 AM. I wasn't stopped. We all know what the outcome could have been if I were black with a hoodie, and how would you have known my intent? So think very carefully before responding to protests with a policy that takes away people's rights and disproportionately affects black people and other people of color. In her initial remarks, the mayor said, "We are all in this together," and with all due respect, that shallow analysis is part of the problem because it whitewashes the fact that some of us have more money than others and that Reno and Nevada is the most unequal city and one of the most unequal states in the United States. If we were all in it together, racial profiling would not be rampant in Nevada, and we would pass basic criminal justice initiatives the black community here has been demanding for decades. And being all in it together is also not bragging about things like the Human Rights Commission that frankly have no power to do anything about this. I would submit that being all in it together doesn't mean crafting policies and statements that promote a police-state narrative to protect private property. It means that we stand with and we help implement the racial justice demands of the Black Lives Matter movement, and I am so encouraged to hear all the other previous speakers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Bob. Next to speak is Sarah Peterson. Next after that will be Michelle Baker, followed by Helen Fillmore. Sarah Peterson has dropped off. We will hold her, and if she comes back on, we'll move her back up in the queue. Michelle Baker, you are next to give your comments, followed by Helen Fillmore, followed by Natalie Handler.
Hi, I don't want to use up too much time. I just want to say that I stand in solidarity with a lot of the other community members who have spoken before me, and I think that Reno has a lot of work to do, and the rest of the country has a lot of work to do, and I think that we all know why this curfew was put in place and who it was supposed to silence, and I don't think that, you know, the reason you say that you're enforcing it, like, it's very obvious what's happening here, and I think that there has been a lot of peaceful protests in Reno and across the country. And yeah, I just think Reno has a lot to work on, and there needs to be a big structural reform in policing. With that, I will yield my time. To the next person.
Thank you for your comments, Michelle. Next to speak is Helen Fillmore, followed by Natalie Handler, followed by Cameron Hopkins.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name's Helen Fillmore. Following this weekend's protests, we've heard several statements coming from local public officials that only attempt to address public unrest and public protesting. These statements do not even attempt to address the central issue of police violence against black lives. I know it's easy to divert blame when it appears that the specific incident sparking this outcry didn't happen under Reno's jurisdiction. Instead of merely mourning George Floyd's death, we need you to honestly ask yourself, if he was murdered by a Reno police officer, what policies do we have in place to, first of all, prevent that from happening, and secondly, to hold the officer accountable? Through the testimonies provided here today, it's obvious that Reno has a lot of work to do. In general, as a member of the public, it's difficult to find any information on specific policies or initiatives, which is absolutely unacceptable. We need better transparency and accountability across all levels of our law enforcement operations. I want to briefly highlight a report initiated in 2016 by Dr. Angie Taylor and Councilman Delgado. It was officially published in 2018 entitled "Community Policing in Northern Nevada." It outlines very specific shortfalls and recommendations for improvements within our local law enforcement agency. It also highlights certain racial disparities such as our black community makers make up only, community members make up only 2% to 3% of our population, yet they make up 13% to 14% of arrests and 15% to 20% of use-of-force incidents within the Reno Police Department. Additionally, while it appears to be a good first step towards protecting our community members, it does not appear that the city council, mayor, or chief of police have made any attempts to incorporate these recommendations. Specifically, there have not been any real efforts to reform policies to address racial disparities or adequately report on accountability data that also reflects demographic information. If there has, they haven't been communicated to the public, nor are they easily accessible online. The community of Reno is speaking loudly and clearly that we do not tolerate the racial disparities created and perpetuated by law enforcement. And with that, I'd just like to encourage the city council, our mayor, and our chief of police to take action to address these critical issues.
Thank you for your comments, Helen. Next to speak is Natalie Handler, followed by Cameron Hopkins, followed by Mick Thornton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Natalie, the floor is yours.
Please stop using our tax dollars to make investments that support the criminalization of our black and brown communities. More policing cannot fix social conditions, only investments in communities can. Thirty-six percent of the city's budget goes to fund the police, a police department that ranks high nationally and acts of brutality to those it is meant to protect. Divest from the police and divert the funds into our black, Latino, and indigenous peoples' communities. The majority of our city's budget goes to fund the police. Please defund the police and invest in support services that help the community to thrive. Services that truly keep our city safe are health and mental health services, education, youth programs, workforce development, public transportation, to name a few. Studies show that the expanding social and economic programs for under-resourced communities leads to an overall decrease in crime. Please give people of color safe platforms to be heard, work with people of color to create opportunities for their community to flourish. I yield my time to allow for the voices of people of color to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Natalie. Next to speak is Cameron Hopkins, followed by Mick Thornton, followed by Casey Christensen.
Thank you for letting me talk today. There have been some great and passionate calls to action here today, and in time to keep time available for others, that'll keep my comments short. I'd like to thank Mr. Soto for expressing the 50-person limit. While well-articulated here, I would like it to be more communicated broadly. It feels like it might be something people could accidentally violate if they're communicated effectively. I also would like to thank Soto for describing Section 8.34.060, which clearly asks that the curfew be established for a designated emergency area with fixed hours. The entire city being designated as the emergency area seems to be a misuse of how the NAC was written. Additionally, as others have pointed out, indefinite curfews violate the First Amendment right to assembly. The mayor mentioned that she was asked by police to initiate the curfew in the absence of an existing threat. The timing, the curfew starting at the same time as the start time of a vigil downtown is not lost on the citizens of Reno or the people on this call. And finally, there have been vague mentions of outside agitators without any names being used. I ask that these groups be named, especially certain groups like the Boogaloo Boys arrive armed and prepared to incite violence in the name of white supremacy, especially since it puts the Reno police and peacefully protesting citizens of Reno at risk to not know of their potential presence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mick. Next to speak is Casey Christensen, followed by Brandy Moore, followed by Madeline Williams.
Oh, that, I'm Mick.
I'm sorry, that was Cameron Hopkins. Mick Thornton, you are next to speak.
Okay, great, thank you. The protests that happened in our own city and our town's frustration is about more than fixing black law enforcement relations. It's about making sure that we, as black people, are able to fully enjoy the freedom, safety, and opportunities that we've been kept away from for so long. To that end, I want to speak out against the fact that a curfew was put in place and against the newly implemented stand on public gathering. First, I want to say that I respect and understand the council's desire to keep us safe with the curfew, and I respect your duty to ensure our safety in the short term, but I also think you have a duty to ensure our safety in the long term, which I think the curfew goes against. The mayor initially talked about wanting to prevent death through the curfew, but I want you all to not forget that people are dying, and as a black citizen of Reno, what the curfew did above keeping us safe was to keep the status quo stable. We have been dying and continue to die, and the black citizens of Reno are desperate to reach you with our cries for safety in the form of protests. We are dying, we're dying from COVID, we're dying from our interactions with the police, from lack of healthcare, and in poverty. Please keep us safe. I ask you as city council members to speak to our community. A commonly-held belief in our own town is that it's horrible that an innocent black man was killed, but that the property damage has got to stop. I ask you as our leaders to do your best to reverse that narrative. It is horrible that property is being damaged, but the killing of innocent black men and women is what has to stop. More George Floyds will continue to die around our nation, in every city in our nation, as long as we continue the status quo of dependency on our police department. We need massive reform in Reno. An emergency budgetary review is in order. I want to ask the council to use your power to approve the city's budget to divert money we, as a community, are investing into the police department, into community services, and paying social workers to help our black community. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mick. Next to speak is Brandy Moore, followed by Madeline Williams, followed by Nicholas Minor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Brandy, you have the floor.
Hello. Thank you. I just want to say this is also my first time speaking at a city council meeting, so thank you for your time and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I also wanted to say that I am also here in solidarity with Black Lives Matter. I'm extremely proud of my fellow Reno citizens that are here today to speak out against the injustices that have been happening, and I do mirror most of what they have said, so I won't get too close to that, but what I wanted to particularly talk about was the curfew and how that does directly affect the people of color in our city, including the black and Hispanic community, because it is predominantly white, wealthy people who have Monday through Friday nine-to-five jobs. The curfew does not directly affect them because they have time to go home. I do understand that there is going to be a lift on the curfew, at least that is what I have come to understand, but, you know, in the future, we need to think about these things. How are we going to ensure that the people of color who are working their jobs till 4:00 AM, who walk home, who ride the bus, who, you know, aren't, how are they going to feel protected to get home? Also, why was the message not sent out in Spanish so that everyone can understand what was going on, especially now when so many people don't feel safe in law enforcement? So many people have been racially profiled. We don't feel safe from our police department, so having a curfew set in place just only puts more fear into the community. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments, Brandy. Next to speak is Madeline Williams, followed by Nicholas Minor, followed by Anna McKay.
Hi, I'd like to start by letting you know about a recent development in Minneapolis, which is that their city council is considering defunding their police department. Here's a direct quote from Steve Fletcher, Minneapolis Ward 3. He says, "Several of us on the council are working on finding out what it would take to disband the NPD and start fresh with a community-oriented, nonviolent, public safety and outreach capacity. Our city needs a public safety capacity that doesn't fear our residents, that doesn't need a gun at a community meeting, that considers itself part of our community, that doesn't resort quickly to pepper spray when people are understandably angry, that doesn't murder black men." And if that description, that second part, sounds familiar, it's because it also fits our own police department really well. Next, I would like to describe to you what Minneapolis already had in place since 2018 and how none of it did anything to prevent the continued murder of black and brown bodies in Minneapolis. Internally, they had a different procedural justice program. They also implemented de-escalation training and an early intervention system to seek out any policemen who might be considered violent. They did more police leadership training. They had a women's leadership group. They created a health and wellness unit and created mindfulness training. They also changed the way they were recruiting externally. They worked on group violence intervention. They created co-responder and mental health teams, which are probably comparable to Reno's own MOST team. They discussed Narcan. They created community navigators. They did all of these things, but none of them prevented the murders that continue to happen, and particularly the murder of George Floyd. So if reform is not the answer, what's happening in Reno? Well, according to mapping police violence, which other people have referred to, not only is Reno eighth in the nation, but our cops murder black men at 12.1 times the national murder rate. That is astronomical, and it's unacceptable. In addition, we are participants in the military access program, which I decided to go over this morning as a bit of light reading, and what I found is that there is little to no oversight on what any of these tools are used for. Also, there's a small arm for every officer. There is an armored car, one vehicle for every three officers. There are two MRAPs.
You've got a very strict body cam policy.
I would like to not be interrupted, please. Thank you. In addition to that, I couldn't, in this document, this government document I found, I didn't see any of that. There's also one robot for every 25 officers. I don't know what robot means, but that is interesting and something that should be looked at. Finally, I would like to bring to mind again the Reno police budget, which has increased by $1 million for the 2020-2021 year, while education is operating at a $4 million deficit. I think that shows pretty clearly that the city's priorities are out of place, and I would suggest that you follow the lead of the city council of other cities such as Minneapolis in defunding the police department and reallocating those resources elsewhere.
Thank you for your comments, Brandy. Next to speak is Madeline Williams, followed by Nicholas Minor, followed by Audrey Broughton. I apologize. Natalie, thank you for your comments. Madeline Williams, you are next to speak. Madeline Williams, you are next to speak. Madeline, thank you for your comments. Nicholas Minor, you're up.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thanks. So first off, I wanted to address what Chief Soto was talking about with the logic behind these sort of indefinite curfews or curfews at his discretion. He stated that it was to stop, not to stop people from walking dogs or disrupt businesses. Just want to ask, if it's not for that, then what is it for? It sounds like it was to address standard crime, which is happening normally. And if it's not just to deal with standard crime, then it's obviously to deal with protests and people expressing their right to free speech. I think we have a fundamental issue in our empathy here, and we're seeing riots as a problem. We're seeing that people expressing their right to speech as the issue that we're facing. And rioting and protests are not the cause of anything, they are a consequence of neglect. And in a city where we, people have mentioned plenty of data points to where we're failing, we're approaching this as trying to treat the consequence and not trying to treat the cause. So I would like to see in the future implemented some of the solutions that people have mentioned here as far as excessive violence and racial profiling. I don't really feel that applying sort of indefinite curfews is something that has a place in this country. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Nicholas. At this time, Mr. Vice Mayor, there were persons who previously registered for our webinar who indicated they did not want to speak, however, they have raised their hand in the Zoom webinar, so we will defer to them for a public comment. If any of the public commenters on the line did not indicate that they would like to speak, but they have changed their mind, now is their opportunity to raise their hand via the Zoom webinar, and we will get to them. First to speak is Audrey Broughton, followed by Alicia Funkhauser, followed by Jenan Barhoudi.
Hello, my name is Audrey Broughton. I would like to use my time today to say the names of individuals who have been killed by Reno PD and other police departments that operate in the Reno Sparks area. On May 4th, 2020, Ronald Zendejas was killed by Sparks PD. On February 13th, 2020, Abel Lopez Lopez was killed by Sparks PD. On February 5th, 2020, Daniel Murillo was killed by Reno PD. On January 5th, 2020, Makai Lee was killed by Sparks PD. On April 28th, 2019, Jose Dominguez was killed by Sparks PD. On April 12th, 2019, Dennis Og was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On April 12th, 2019, Chad Rickob was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On January 10th, 2019, Morris Reed was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On September 24th, 2018, Philip Serrano was killed by Reno PD. On August 17th, 2018, Rolando Brazuela was killed by Sparks PD. On March 31st, 2018, Nicholas Sedano was killed by Reno PD. On January 24th, 2018, Humberto Vera Munoz was killed by Sparks PD. On November 28th, 2017, Lucas Stone was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office and Reno PD. On October 22nd, 2017, Johnny Bonta was killed by Sparks PD. On August 4th, 2017, Corey Stevens was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On March 28th, 2017, Travis Lee Hathaway was killed by the Sparks PD. On March 2nd, 2017, Rafael Navarro Garcia was killed by Reno PD. On February 23rd, 2017, Stephen Valenzuela was killed by Reno PD. On December 21st, 2016, Raymond Faleas was killed by Reno PD. On October 15th, 2016, Christopher Tolancon was killed by Sparks PD. On August 19th, 2016, Kyle Zimbellman was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On August 12th, 2016, Justin Thompson was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. In September 28th, 2016, Jorge Moreno Aguirre was killed by Sparks PD. September 3rd, 2016, Raúl Saavedra Vargas was killed by the Reno PD. On March 10th, 2016, Artear Porter was killed by Sparks Reno PD. On January 25th, 2016, Sergio Alvarado Morales was killed by Reno PD. On November 22nd, 2015, Matthew Groves was killed by Reno PD. On October 8th, 2015, Thomas J. Purdy was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On August 20th, 2015, Nico Elsmith was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On November 5th, 2014, Robert William Hampton III was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. On September 10th, 2014, Matthew Sinclair Morrow was killed by the Reno PD. On September 3rd, 2014, James Luke Bowman was killed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office.
Audrey, thank you for your comments today.
Hold on. Audrey, do you have a few more names to read?
The list goes on for about a page and a half more. So it would probably take a few more minutes to get to the end of the list. But I would like to make the point that the list, there should be zero people on the list, and I think that this is just evidence that we need to work on. Defunding the police should be a priority, and also de-escalation is another really, really big priority that we need to enact.
Thank you for your comments, Audrey. If you'd like to submit the list to my office, we can include it with public comment for your comments today, so it is on the record.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Jenan Barhoudi, followed by Jeffrey Holbrook, followed by Ryan Firmino.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jenan Barhoudi.
Thank you.
I would, oh, thank you. I would just like to continue what Alex Munson was saying. Using anything that will intentionally harm the health of the citizens during COVID-19 is extremely problematic. Infectious disease specialists have called for an end to tear gas during the COVID-19, and petitions are circulating around the country to call use of tear gas to end. I call on the city council and the mayor to commit to cease, to commit to the cease of use of tear gas, rubber bullets, and other military-style weapons on our peaceful protesters in Reno. And then for my comment, I just wanted to ask city council members, what have you done to unpack your own racist biases? I emailed a resource list to you, Mayor Sheevy, and to my ward for Representative City Council Memberwoman Reber. I want to know what you are all personally doing to be more self-aware of the racist ideologies you uphold in your own lives, and if you're willing to do the work to unpack them. Before you try to deny racist ideology, take a step back and look at how the city council has responded to the killings by police of black men in our community, by putting curfews so we cannot peaceably assemble, which is our First Amendment right, and by showing up for law enforcement. Put yourself in the shoes of the victims or the families of the victims who have been murdered by the police. What kind of a message does that send to them? When we have a protest that is saying to stop killing black lives, and there's no real support from these city council members, I'm asking to defund the police, make actual programs for our communities, especially our communities of color. I've worked in public service for over five years in this community, and I can tell you right now, we are not well-equipped to give proper mental health care to our citizens. They're being traumatized every single day. I'm asking you to start with yourselves and with your own homes to unpack what you've learned to better serve our community. And on that note, I think that the over-representation of people of color in our prison system, specifically in Nevada, needs to be addressed. But it starts with what we can do as individuals. And so I'm calling on you, all of you city council members, start to unpack the racist ideology that you have just by being a citizen of the United States. We are all understanding our world as we operate it, as we see it. And as white-passing people or as white people, we need to understand how that translates into the work that we do. Everything that we do is covered with a lens of white superiority. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Jeffrey Holbrook, followed by Ashley Wade, followed by Dr. Jeffrey Mitchell.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. I'm actually here to speak on Agenda Item C1, Mountain View, so I'm not making public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. We will hold your place in line for Item C1 for the public hearing. Next to speak is Ashley Wade, followed by Dr. Jeffrey Mitchell, followed by Shyla Summers.
Good morning. I'm a teacher, and I'm raising my family's fourth generation here in Washoe County. In my father's lifetime, the city of Reno and white vigilantes regularly swept downtown. They would sweep black, brown, and indigenous Nevadans off the street during the exact hours of this curfew. This morning, Reno PD forced hundreds of our neighbors out of their only shelter during the global pandemic. By reacting to our community's needs with this police state violence, Mayor Sheevy and Chief Soto have stripped away 60 years of our community's progress. I would recognize or acknowledge the list of people killed by police in our area, and I'm not saying, you know, I mean, like, it's unacceptable. And also, we've been trying to make progress. And in 36, 48 hours, these decisions have stripped away all of that. My children are terrified, and I don't even try, you know, I try to shield this from all of them. My 11-year-old's first question is, I thought these are the people that were supposed to keep us safe during this pandemic. Who do we listen to now? It stripped away all trust that we've had for the decision-makers in our area. And by doing that, it has put us all in danger. And that's before we consider the military weapons used by the Reno PD during this global pandemic are tools of war. COVID-19 is primarily spread through respiration. Tear gas causes coughing, wheezing, respiratory distress. So not only is the use of tear gas against our own people banned as chemical warfare, we're using it now during this pandemic is also an act of biological warfare against our own people during the same times, in the same setting, that white people were sweeping people of color off our streets 60 years ago. It's very distressing. So I would ask that as we see this wave of homelessness coming as a result of the depression from this pandemic, I would ask that we defund completely the police department for the city of Reno. And I would also ask that Mayor Sheevy and Chief Soto step down, because these decisions go against everything that keeps us safe as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ashley. Next to speak is Dr. Jeffrey Mitchell, followed by Shyla Summers, followed by Eduardo Aquino Marquez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thanks. I'm calling in from northern Sweden, where I live and work, but I am still a registered resident in Reno, Nevada. I vote there, I pay taxes there. And I'm happy that the Zoom webinar has allowed me to participate and hear my fellow citizens give such eloquent, focused, and well-researched comments. I don't really have much else to say, but I will say this. I'm speaking to express my solidarity with both local and national Black Lives Matter movements and to condemn the violent and repressive tactics that the Reno Police Department used against its citizens, as well as the absurd curfew imposed by the city of Reno. As a sociologist who studies both prejudice and police violence, I urge the city to do the work to implement the policy changes that have been brought to you by the public today, namely reallocating funds away from the police into community programs, updating police use-of-force policies, and establish a citizen investigatory panel that has actual power to investigate police-related deaths by the people, of people by the Reno Police Department. There are also many other policies that are antecedent to the social context that lead up to interactions with the police that will, that we know will reduce police violence in our communities. And those include housing, mental health, medical care, veteran services, and many other things that will require cooperation with county, state, and federal agencies. And I want to remind you, city council members, that as a local governing body who is closest to your constituents, it is your job to fight on our behalf for these issues just as hard or more so than you fight for real estate investment, freeway funds, or any other social program. Thank you very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Shyla Summers, followed by Eduardo Aquino Marquez, followed by Akash Krishnan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor, Shyla.
All right. Shyla was unable to... I would like to read a list of demands that have been considered the bare minimum for preventing the further brutality of the police and the police state. We demand for the release of the investigation into the death of Makai Lee and transparency and justice for all people killed by RPD, SPD, and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, with all officers involved be held criminally accountable; for RPD, SPD, and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to completely cut ties with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement; for Washoe County School District, UNR, and TMCC to cut ties with Reno and Sparks Police Departments; for the militarization and disarming of Reno and Sparks Police Departments; and that this Reno and Sparks Police Department be defunded and their budget be provided for the mobile outreach safety team and other social work and community support programs, as well for affordable housing and healthcare. I have been and spoken at a lot of city council meetings, and not much has ever come out of them. And I feel that a lot of times, U.S. elected officials will blame the restrictions of your elected office. But in the position that you are in, to be fighting any less than people who have not been elected to serve the people is a disgrace, and you should be out here fighting for the safety of your citizens harder than any person on the ground today. Thank you.
For your comment, Shyla. Next to speak is Eduardo Aquino Marquez, followed by Akash Krishnan, followed by Emily Lee. As a reminder to everyone on the phone, anyone who previously indicated they did not wish to speak, now is your time to raise your hand. You may do this either via the Zoom link, or if you are dialing in, you may dial *9 to do so. Eduardo, you have the floor. Reminder to everyone, *6 unmutes your phone. We have you unmuted on our end. Eduardo, you may proceed.
Hi, this is, this is Akash, not Eduardo.
I'm sorry, this is who?
This is Akash, Akash Krishnan.
Hi, Akash, thank you. You'll be next. I believe we have Eduardo is in front of you. I see that he's unmuted, and he may begin his comments. You'll be next to speak.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to say that the citywide curfew is unjust and leaves people like myself, many other immigrants, and young people out of work, and it serves to make the right to public protest illegal. The city of Reno acknowledged that is not under any current threat, so this curfew is not to keep the city safe, but rather to silence and punish those who wished to protest or who were in support of Saturday's protest. The police system needs to be reformed. I do not feel safe around police. Police come into my place of work every day, and whenever around them, I feel scared, frightened instead of safe. It should be the complete opposite of that. City Councilman Alfred Elgato once spoke to the Dean's Future Scholars Program, which I am a part of, and he told me, if I want to make my voice heard, then I need to contact my city councilman, and that's what I'm doing today. I want to make it known that I do not feel safe in this city with police around because of their actions, and I want to make it known that this curfew is punishing those who wish to go to work or who wish to protest, and that peaceful protest should be legal. This curfew only serves to punish those who wish to do that. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Eduardo. Next to speak is Akash Krishnan, followed by Emily Lee.
Okay, hi. So for context, I'm a recently graduated high school student.
Okay, hi. So for context, I'm a recently graduated high school senior. Tens before me have expressed their disgust and revulsion with the police departments locally and their blatant disregard and brutal treatment of Black and Brown lives. I grew up believing this body was a protective one, and this realization is all I need to understand my privilege that Black people are denied in this institutionally racist community and broader society. I have high hopes for the city of Reno because I've seen Reno change and grow, but if that de-militarization, de-funding, and de-escalation everyone is called upon doesn't happen with our council, then it will happen at the ballot box. We elect our council based on substantive representation, and if our voices go unheard, we will ensure those who will represent our ideologies and policy preferences are elected to office. I'd like to conclude by saying I'm feeling so inspired and revitalized listening to all the community members who are here in support of Black lives. If you, City Council members, are not vibrating with a fervent anger, passion, and outrage to do everything you can to represent your people, then I fear for you, because you've lost that marker of your humanity. Thank you, and I see the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Emily Lee, followed by Kayla Fanazi, followed by Harold Jones.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor, Emily.
Hi, my name is Emily Lee. I am a Renoite since the day I was born. I was born and raised. That's been twenty years. I am a college student here, and I have seen the city's success ebb and flow. To say the least, I am tired, I am angry, and I'm sad. I've lost faith in my city. The curfew, first off, is unjust. I would like to echo the sentiments said today. The police brutality is insurmountable, and Reno, as it is, has been said before, has ranked high in police brutality. Back to the curfew. The curfew was felt, I felt, was to silence us and to suppress our First Amendment rights and to squander what a peaceful protest all protests that have been held in Reno have been peaceful. We cannot control outsiders. On top of that, you're affecting local businesses that thrive at nighttime. My mother is a bartender here. You're cutting her hours without knowing. You affect businesses I work at that serve all of Reno on a daily basis and from out of town. To quote my store leader, "How am I supposed to run a business when curfew was imposed an hour and a half before it starts? I get off at 6:30. How am I supposed to go grocery shopping for my house?" You are silencing the people of Reno and taking away the First Amendment rights without being discreet. Physical doors and windows are being replaced the next day after the protest, but those Black lives lost will never come back. City Council members, I urge you to do something. We need it as a community. Please, thank you. I receive my time.
Thank you for your comments. Emily, next to speak is Kayla Fanazi, followed by Harold Jones, followed by Ryan Firmino.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Kayla Fanazi, and I stand with the Black Lives Matter movement. I just wanted to thank all of our speakers today, all of the constituents who have voiced their concern, their opinion, and their outrage. Since everything that everybody said is already something I currently align with, I thought I would take this time just to provide the council with some additional feedbacks. This is my first council meeting attendance. I'm a little bit disappointed in some of the ways that this call was handled, though I do appreciate some of the accessibility. I think that the interruptions during the public comments were inappropriate. And I also think that before the next council meeting, some technical issues should be addressed. Just to ensure that everybody that should be present is present, I also ask that anybody who is visible on camera do not visibly leave their station during the call. I think it's dismissive, and it wouldn't be done in person if you were making eye contacts with all of the constituents. So I do ask that in the future, everybody remains engaged, makes at least some sort of eye contact, facial contact with their cameras, if they are visible. I also think in terms of accessibility, and again, I'm not sure of exactly how this usually works, but it would be cool if we could take advantage of the visual element to provide ASL for people who would like to be a part of these meetings but are not able to physically listen. Translation would be fantastic if there are no plans to currently translate what took place into other languages. I think that would be fantastic. And again, going back to active listening, there were several people who stated their names clearly, spelled them, said them directly, and I feel like those voices weren't necessarily heard. It may not seem like that big of an issue, but on an interpersonal level, when people tell you how to say and pronounce their names, it should be something that's taken into account, especially when several family members called in today to speak about their feelings. So again, I just want to make sure that everybody's heard, and I appreciate everybody for speaking today. I receive the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Harold Jones, followed by Ryan Firmino, followed by Damian Cole.
Hi, I'm submitting this as a citizen of Ward Five and also in solidarity with Black Lives Matter and in support, they're called to action regarding policing. We are currently failing to meet police reform headway with the most obvious example being a curfew implicitly to restrict the rights of Reno citizens. We don't need heavy-handed policing of our streets when there is no threat in the city. It is imperative that Reno City Council revisit the budget for 2020 and 2021. Consistent with past years, the proposed budget for Reno Police takes a too large a portion of the budget for the city of Reno. The police are tasked with issues that are fundamentally impossible for them to properly deal with, with one example being Black poverty. Police forces inherently violent disproportionately uses that violence against Black people and only addresses the symptoms, the issue of Black poverty. If one looks at a zoning map of elementary schools in Reno, it is apparent that our schools are segregated. The city could use funds to invest in ending the segregation that exists in our public schools, which exacerbates Black poverty, rather than using those funds to use the police to violently retaliate against the symptoms of segregated schools. The mayor and council must do actual work to end the violence, to end the violent oppression of Black people. The police are trained to kill Black people. The police can never be trained to conduct community policing. Police funding must be caught and invested in actual true community support programs. There's so much wealth in this community that only serves the interest of the affluent white community. With that, I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Ryan Firmino, followed by Damian Cole, followed by Sarah Walton.
Hi, do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, I was just, I don't have anything written down. I didn't research any data, but I just wanted to say a couple things. It's kind of a dark rabbit hole that you guys go into. I recently moved back over here. I'm originally from Boston. The curfew was put in place during the Marathon bombing when I was out in Boston, and that was, you know, it was due diligence for the community. You know, it made sense. It worked. With what's going on in this country and in the city with everything that's going on, it's not great. I don't have the answers. Nobody has the answers. But when it comes into taking away people's rights when it comes to protesting, which this is a direct form of it with this curfew, you know, it's going to affect this drastically. It's not going to let people have a voice. It's going down a really dark rabbit hole for you guys. I just don't want to wish anything bad on the city or the community, and it's going to be, it's really going to bring up some seriously drastic problems. The main thing with the focus with George Floyd, everyone's all up in arms and very upset when it comes to the protesters and the rioters. I'm a firm believer in you can always be mad at somebody's actions, but not their reactions. All the people in this community, they're reacting towards something, and something that's been going on for a very long time, and it's not fair. And for them to be able to, not be able to express their feelings, whatever way they see fit, not condoning anything that's illegal or wrong or immoral, but they're not going to be able to express any form of feelings whatsoever. Now, you guys are going to provoke this with this action of curfew. There's going to be another reaction from the community, which whether it's good, bad, and different, it's going to happen, and it's just not good, and things need to change. I appreciate it, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Damian Cole, followed by Sarah Walton.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. You may proceed.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me today. I am a resident of thirteen years of the city of Reno. I am speaking against the curfew. I was out there on Saturday evening. Once the emergency alert was put out, I was outside playing my accordion. People laughed, they smiled, they thanked me, they told me it was helping clear the atmosphere. And miraculously, my building was unscathed while all of the surrounding ones were tagged and vandalized. The City Council is being baited into an escalation. It's a self-perpetuating problem. The protest is about rebellion against established authority. This is being done by provoking response from that authority. The riots were started by a small group that was separate from the main protest. It was intending to incite a larger response from the police and therefore bring more people out there, which it did. It eventually became hundreds of people. There were points of, the points of greatest authority is where the protesters are aiming their efforts, and especially the instigators. Most after-hours protesters came in response to the emergency alert that was put out there. The perpetual curfew is an immense escalation of this, and it is the very thing that provokes a larger response from the community. Like the comedian Bill Hicks once said, "It is a choice between fear and love." This is a self-perpetuating problem. The more defensive the council becomes, the more fearful, the stronger the response will be from the community. The curfew is being enacted out of fear. The best response is to embrace the protesters by joining with them, not against them. In other words, you have to capitulate. They're asking for reform. They're asking for de-funding, for the dismantling of established structure. A loving response will be what de-escalates tension and brings about peace and order. It might seem counterintuitive, but it will work. Never forget, love is the answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Sarah Walton, followed by Ellie Cook.
Hi there, this is Sarah Walton. I am a Reno resident and have been for a very long time. I am a birth worker in our area. I attend both home and hospital births. I just want to bring up that racism is seen in the boardroom, it's seen in the birth room, and it's seen in folks' own bedrooms. And I am aware that change will take time, but more importantly, it will take a lot of action, and it will take a lot of people feeling uncomfortable, and that is what we need to happen, and that is what we want to happen. We need people to feel uncomfortable. The other thing that I would really like to bring up is there is a call to action called #8Can'tWait. It's the number eight, and then C-A-N-T-W-A-I-T.org. And they are eight actionable items that we can request from our police forces that they're just policies that can decrease police violence up to seventy-two percent. Seventy-two percent would save lives. So I really encourage you to look that up and push that if at all possible. These things include banning chokeholds and strangleholds, requiring de-escalation, requiring warning before shooting, exhausting all alternatives before shooting, duty to intervene, ban shooting at moving vehicles, establish use-of-force continuum, and require that all force be reported. I am really, really requesting that these things be effective immediately. They're small changes, and they can easily happen, and it's something that we can do today. Thank you, and I will let the rest happen. Thank you.
Ms. Rice, Mayor, thank you for your comments. Sarah, next to speak is Ellie Cook. At this time, I would ask any of our webinar registrants who are on, who wish to give public comment, this will be the last call for general public comment as it does not relate to a specific agenda item. If you're on your Zoom link, please raise your hand. Otherwise, if you are on the phone, you may dial *9 to raise your hand. Otherwise, this will be our last public comment. Ellie, you may proceed.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Ellie, and I have been I'm based in Hong Kong, and as some of you may know, there has been a pro-democracy movement for the past year. I would like to erase doubt on the modification of the curfew that is now lifted. I grew very concerned when I heard that the Reno Police will invoke emergency regulation and control if they see any form of lawlessness or unrest after 7:00 p.m. To me, I am, Hong Kong is any guide. I'm just afraid that the official will be arbitrarily declared violent and unlawful and violently cracked down with tear gas as soon as the hour hand hits 7:00 p.m. That's what I have witnessed in the pro-democracy movement back in Hong Kong, when assemblies have to be pre-approved by police in a certain time period. So I would like to hear whether or not there will be any measures for people to safely, for the gathered crowds on Saturday, to safely go home as soon as the hour hand hits 7:00 p.m., which is the time period that the Reno Police say that there will be more vigilance on any unrest. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments, Ellie. Next to speak is Haley Summers, followed by Andy Gagnon, followed by Marina Lo. Haley Summers, you're next.
Hi, thank you. I've unmuted myself. Thank you so much. Haley Summers, Jenny Brekis, this comment is specifically for you and also for Hillary Sheevy. The students of the University of Nevada Reno created a resolution advocating for various government bodies to create legislation discriminating textured hair discrimination in the workplace. We've had a lot of requests for call to action, and this body has received a resolution from the student government asking that laws be created that protect people of color from discrimination in the workplace because of the way that their hair naturally presents. I would like to ask if this body has reviewed the resolution, yes or no, and if they could agendize it for possible action at your upcoming council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next to speak is Andy Gagnon, followed by Marina Lo, followed by Q Bronson.
Thank you. Again, my name is Andy Gagnon. Thank you, City Council members, for making the time to listen to me and my fellow residents. I recognize there are valid reasons for the formal parliamentary procedures we are subject to in today's forum. However, this forum doesn't reflect the structure of a true conversation, give-and-take process, providing for deeper understanding and empathy. I encourage all City Council members to demonstrate true leadership and courage, and as soon as possible, set up less formal forums to have actual discussions with the city populace across all of our racial, language, technological, and economic diversity. Be brave and be a leader in public, not merely on Zoom, social media, or through traffic communications. Demonstrate publicly the inclusive conversations that are needed at this time to bring our city back together. Social media is currently rife with examples of great local leadership in towns and cities across our country during these trying times. I encourage each of you to step up and be the leaders we can equally be proud of. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Andy, next to speak is Marina Lo, followed by Q Bronson, followed by Kim Rubio.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to address a comment made by Mayor Sheevy at the beginning of this Zoom call. And she said, "I value property over people." Mayor Sheevy, I find that statement laughable at best. If you state that you care about property over people, but you do not show that with your actions, that's just hypocritical. I'd also like to echo something that someone previously said. The fact that we have people on this Zoom call that are getting up and walking The fact that we have people on this Zoom call that are getting up and walking away is disrespectful to people and to everyone who is trying to state their commentary and state why they are frustrated in this moment, and I would like you to work on that and to do better. I stand with the Black Lives Matter movement. I was at the protest that was led by Black and Indigenous folks over the weekend. It was a call for unity, it was a call for action, and it was a call for our city to do better and be better. I am so grateful for all of the voices that have stood up today to speak out on this issue. I completely agree, we need to demilitarize our police force in the city of Reno, and I just really, really hope that you begin to understand that your actions matter and you are our leaders. So please do better and be there for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Marina. Next to speak is Kim Rubio.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Will you please make sure that my comments are delivered to her?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I will ensure that she gets those.
Because it wasn't, I did not say that I value property over people. It was that I can replace property, I can't replace people. So I want our public commenter to know that. So thank you, I just want to clarify that, because I don't want that to be misguided. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam Mayor. Next to speak is Kim Rubio, followed by Q Bronson, followed by Nadine Chin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Kim, you have the floor.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I wasn't planning on chiming in, but it's a comment that's now come up a handful of times. It is incredibly disrespectful to see these council members looking down on their phones, walking around their apartment. It feels very, just disrespectful and hurtful, and it makes me wonder if anything is actually going to happen after this discussion. Thank you. This is my time.
For the record, please, Ms. Rubio, so that you... Hold on, Ms. Breckus, hold on, I'm speaking. For the record, Ms. Rubio, many of the council members take notes, they're actively listening, they're trying to write down what you say. They also, at times, have to use the restroom, and so it's now going on two and a half or three hours for a meeting, and so you'll have to give us a little bit of grace there. But each one of us is actively listening and participating in the conversation, and doing our best to listen to our colleagues and friends in the community.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. I apologize. No disrespect is made. I think the three of us who are working this meeting with our video on are, you know, trying to listen as best we can, but I do need to use the restroom occasionally, and maybe we'll take a break at some, soon, or should we take a break, Mr. Vice Mayor, do you think?
I don't think so at this time, but thank you.
And I just want to mention that I've taken at least 12 pages of notes at this point, so I appreciate it.
And Vice Mayor Reeve, and you know, Vice Mayor Reeve, you know how I feel about this. I never like to interrupt public comment, so I do not want to take a break, and I would just ask council members to, you know, try to stay in their seats if they possibly can, but understand that if you have to go to the restroom or all of that. But I want to make sure we finish public comment. I don't want to take a break. It's important for people's voices to be heard. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on with our public comment, Q Bronson, followed by Nadine Chin.
Great, thank you. I am a recent transplant to Reno. I lived here before, from Las Vegas. I want to immediately respond that we're done giving you grace as a resident of Reno. This is not new behavior that came out of nowhere, like the killing of Black people every day. The behavior that we're seeing on this Zoom call is not inconsistent with behavior that we have seen prior, so let's not gaslight or pretend like this is unprecedented behavior. But to get to my comments, this is also how the city of Reno participates in structural racism. As a Black man, I was scared to go out in the city that I live in an unprecedented curfew. I love to jog. It is my mental medicine amidst a culture that had to resort to historic demonstrations during an unprecedented pandemic to seek justice for another Black man in this country who was also jogging. He ended up murdered, and we're still seeking justice for that. I'm most moved by the voices on this call who have called for each of you to recognize your own implicit and explicit bias that each of us carry, Black, White, Latino, API, Native American, what have you. I want to recognize the courage of the voices on this call who have called for, quote-unquote, "radical" policy changes. That is, of course, what the opposition, will be the chorus from the opposition. But how, to the mayor, and to the councilors, and to all the elected officials present, can you actually say that you stand with and represent Black Americans when this body and this city are anemic to reform themselves, and they are overtly oppressive? I would expect the police in Turkey to tear gas their own citizens wantonly and with average. That's a repressive police state where I first tasted tear gas. Well, welcome to Reno. And in closing, I agree it is appropriate to call for the resignation of the mayor and the police chief, who is somehow simultaneously operating as city manager. If that ain't white privilege and undemocratic institutional entrenchment, I don't know what is. Mayor, you are wrong. Police manager chief, you are wrong. I don't yield my time, I reclaim it.
Thank you for your comments, Q. Next to speak is Nadine Chin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Nadine. The floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, my name is Nadine, and I was born and raised in Reno. I would like to call for the immediate cessation of the indefinite curfew, the reasons it is unconstitutional, and so distrust between citizens and our government, as already explained by previous citizens. And over the longer term, I also demand that Reno police be defunded. They have demonstrated a consistent and measurable disregard for citizens' lives, including during Saturday's protest. They are a threat to our already small, struggling minority community, and to our low-income and homeless community. These funds should be invested in community-based solutions, including education. As noted, again, by other speakers, that is high rates of police killings, and simultaneously its low ratings on education make me ashamed of our city. I am, however, extremely proud of our citizens who have voiced their concerns and protests. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Nadine. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to note for the record that we received online public comment. Chris Ober called into our voicemail system with a concern. Ty Martin submitted a letter of opposition regarding the curfew. Additionally, online public comment from Paul McCain, Tammy Holt Still, Colin Loretz, Dr. Jeffrey Mitchell, who you also heard from today, and Matthew Schultz all submitted online public comment. Those have been submitted to council and are part of the record. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we're going to, at this time, take a, we'll say, a 15-minute break. That gives the council members the opportunity to stand up. I understand that several council members would like to make comments following the public comment and before we begin our regular meeting, and so that gives you a chance to collect your thoughts, and so we'll be back and stand in recess now until, well, we'll just stand in recess for 15 minutes, so we'll call you back to order in that 15 minutes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we are back in with your meeting and we have all council members present via Zoom. I'm going to send it over to the Acting Manager, Jason Soto. He has a couple of comments as we've closed public comment and we'll be proceeding.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Acting City Manager, Jason Soto. I just wanted to make a few comments. As I, as I listened to all of our public comments today, I, I made a pointed effort to listen to all of you to understand, rather than listen to reply, because I think it's important that I listen to what you have to say. There's a few things that really stood out to me in terms of our own bias.
I can't hear our manager, just too late, you know.
Is the volume low, Naomi, or can you not hear him at all?
Very low volume.
Okay, we will work on adjusting it on our end, thank you. The feedback?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is this better, Councilwoman? Okay, wonderful.
Yes, that was a thumbs up, yes.
Thank you, Acting City Manager, Jason Soto. I wanted to tell our, I wanted to tell our listeners that I, I specifically listened to all of them to understand what they were saying, rather than listening to reply. And there was a few things that really came out of many of their public comments that resonated with me. First of all is recognizing, all of us recognizing our own implicit biases and things that we need to work on continually. A couple of suggestions that I have heard was, we're tired of talk and we want to, we want, we want to see some action. One of the policies that was brought up by one of the, the public comment was somebody that said that we should, at the Reno Police Department, have a policy to intervene. And as I watched the senseless killing of George Floyd, I was every bit as disturbed with the lack of intervention. So I have directed our Acting Police Chief to begin crafting a policy into which our officers are required to intervene if they witness another officer using excessive force. That's a start. Secondly, last night I had a conversation with Senator Cortez Masto, and we had talked about how we can do better as a profession and personally within our agency. Many years ago, we started a lot of work on the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and the Six Pillars of Policing, building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, tech and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and officer wellness and safety. And I think that's some of the best reform that was ever, that was ever worked on, to be honest and frank, to where we got police departments under, working with our communities to, to look at ourselves and to be better. The Reno Police Department in specific is listed in that report, but we can still do better. Since that time, we hired the Gwynne Center to see how well we were doing on the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and where we can continue to do better. So you certainly have my commitment in looking at policy. Again, I've directed Chief, Acting Chief Tom Robinson to create policy for officers to intervene. I've also directed Chief, Acting Chief Robinson to review our use of force policy. All of these steps and measures need to take place, given what is happening in our country. In, in closing, I just, I, I, I really just want to speak to all of the Black Lives Matter protesters that were out there on Saturday and tell you that I recognize that you were all peacefully protesting. I watched, I listened, I was extremely impressed in how you carried yourself, how you expressed your message. And I hope that all of you know me, or if you don't, I would like to, I would like you to, and know that I am a man that of values and that I do listen and that I do understand that we all have to take a deep look in ourselves and that it's my responsibility to make sure that change occurs when change needs to occur within our law enforcement or our police department. Lastly, we are working currently on a forum to involve our community. We will get those details and information out because I think this conversation needs to continue. And I think this conversation needs to include all of our community and not just the police portion of our community. So I thank you all for your comments. I have all of your comments. I tried to take notes on all of your comments and thank you for speaking today.
Thank you, Chief Soto, and I apologize, my computer screen is going in and out, so I'm not sure if you see me currently, but we'll work on that in the chambers. I'm going to go now to my council colleagues, if I could just see some raising of hands, or you can push your button. Okay, hold on one second. Okay, I'm not sure that any, oh, Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I just, since I'm on screen, I'll start. I just want to thank everyone who engaged in the conversation today. We know we're operating under different, difficult situations, but thank you all for helping us understand, you know, in language, what people were doing in their physical presence on Saturday when they participated in that largely peaceful protest. I think this can be an inflection point and a jumping point for our city to do what many cities around the country need to do. A lot of people have done a lot of research, I can tell, with data points and data sets. I've always used on this issue the data set that former Reno News and Review reporter Brian Burghart had with his Fatal Encounters document. And I was on the phone yesterday with him about that and about some of the data sets. So I think as we continue this conversation, it's going to be very good to speak from a common point of data set and elevate what is the Reno experience. I look forward to that. The budgetary issues, I appreciate everyone who's commented on that. It's, our budget work takes up maybe a third quarter of the year and we need to pursue that conversation within that framework. And I look forward to people's particip- participation on that. I want to say that I think the vast majority of our Reno officers are hardworking and got into this out of service. I, I really do. And this is from someone who, I, I ride my bike down to the Reno track when the new academy and recruits are trying to do their training, to look over who's getting into police work. Where are the women? Where are the people of color? Hello? You know, I, I hope you will make it and come forward. And I think that that recruitment piece and that diversification sensitivization, new blood into police forces around the country and ours is so critical. And I, and I'm appreciative of people who brought that forward and those who want to step into this in these times. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I want to, two other points is the curfew. I'll look forward to say what, how the mayor wants to clarify that under her powers and the threats that they see. I was caught a little off guard, but I'm looking forward to hearing more about what the landscape is. And some people have raised my attention that if the council doesn't believe that the curfew is in place, we have our authority also, but at this point, we're acting under the mayor's authority of curfew. A couple of things were directed to me by speakers about checking your bias of white privilege. And that's something that I have been working on quite a bit. I appreciate, I don't know who, a couple of people have said that, but in my field as a city planner, there's been a lot of language about that and it's something that is very front and center to me. And then also my household has issues too that we've encountered and we discuss that and we are a house of, of mixed ethnicities, so I have that perspective as well. Some people who said, and I know a lot of people here have not engaged before about those of us who are getting up or, or so on. I want to say that since the council went virtual on March, I have been on video, on screen the entire time. And so we're a body of seven and I've been on with visibility to seeing me in, you know, this spare bedroom with a lot of clutter around me since all those meetings. And I also want to bring up something that I've mentioned before, since going back to 2012 when I Ray came on. My father was a police, a city council member in the Bay Area when his suburban police department tried to get a bayonet from a military disposal program. And he said, "We don't need a bayonet." And if those grants have come forward to the Reno City Council, since I've been on 2012, I've asked about those and questioned them. And I wouldn't like to go back retroactively, look at them, but I don't think one has come through that has been inappropriate. And I was, I've been asking about those for eight years. And someone mentioned the robot. I think that's a bomb diffuser that prevents some of our police officers from having to go in to a building when there's a bomb threat and can do it manually. So those are the sort of things that I've seen. I'm going to be, I have some lawn chairs on order and I will be meeting with residents all through the summer who want to meet with me in the McKinley parking lot. We can sit safely separated, so anyone from Ward One, you know, get on my calendar. McKinley's parking lot's nice, I have a place for us to sit and have a conversation and we can bring in other folks with other chairs. And the person who directed the comments about the hair rules from the University of Reno, I don't think I've seen that. I've been trying to get my mail out of City Hall, but maybe that skips, so please do reach out. But I also want to thank very much everyone and I also want to thank our chief because I do have confidence in the, in the work that he is doing and that he is a caring person and is getting the right message down through the rank and file. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you very much for giving me just a moment to speak. I just wanted to say how inspired I was by the protest, the actions of the protesters and what they stand for, what they believe in. Those are many of the same principles that I believe in. That's why it's so important to me. I was also very inspired by the coming together of our community after the destruction that occurred on Saturday night. Hundreds of people turned out to, to pick up glass, to clean up our community, to come together. Many of those people were people who participated in the protest and they were proud to be there. They are community members. And it really showed the character of the people that live in Reno. I have been heartbroken for our country. I have recently made some, some posts, I've spoken out. I try to keep my focus on city council business and city issues, not national politics. But it was hard to miss when George Floyd's death occurred. I was pretty much immobilized and it was difficult to come forward after that and thinking about all of the people that have come before. We can do better, we can do much better. Some of the ideas presented here today in my now 14 pages of notes, I think are excellent. And I've been gathering ideas. The morning after the protest, I immediately called Holly Walborn with ACLU to begin asking her, "What else can we do? What can we do better?" People sent me lists of other activists in our community, maybe younger activists, who I haven't gotten to know personally yet, and I want to. And I want our entire council to be part of this conversation. I've experienced discrimination myself, you may not be able to tell by the color of my skin, but many communities within our country have experienced every kind of discrimination. And so this, the issues that we're facing today with Black Lives Matter, strike cards, they are important. We need to address them and I just want to ensure that all of us are part of that conversation. To that end, in addition to the list of great ideas that we heard in terms of the use of force, the body cams, the implicit bias training, what I would also like to see, in addition to the forum that our chief spoke about, is a series of conversations, not, maybe not everybody's in every conversation, but it needs to be an ongoing dialogue, not a kind of once and done. I think the forum would be more of a kickoff, maybe to a continuation. I also want to say this and take it or leave it, I do understand the pain. My family worked in civil rights in the 60s, the 70s, and the 80s. We were very active, our whole entire family. I saw the pain upfront. We helped the very first black folks of that time move into our all-white community. As children, we were the people that would go correct the trash cans that were turned over or set things to right. And it was ingrained in me very early. It doesn't mean, mean at all that I am absent of bias or understand all of those biases in my language and my actions, but it does mean that I had a, an upbringing that centered me on what is important to people. And from that upbringing, I've continued to focus and I want to continue that focus now and working with our chief. I think that he is a great leader. I think our mayor is a great leader. And I want to make sure that I back them and support them in these going-forward efforts. So I appreciate the opportunity to just make a few comments today. Bottom line, I am committed to change and make this a better community. That is why I got ran for office, got elected to office, and continue to work on those issues. And I, and I appreciate the time to speak today, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar, and let me just see if I can get my video to start. Can, can one of the councilmembers tell me if they can see me at this point? Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
So I want to say a couple of things and, and first of all, thanks to all the public for being here today and for their passionate advocacy for our community. I, I want to first start any conversation that I would have on this subject by acknowledging the profound privilege that I have as a white male in this country. the profound privilege that I have as a white male in this country. I am someone who has a great deal of respect and admiration for the Black Lives Matter movement and the folks who are doing the work. I do not believe that now is the time for a white man to tell black people or people of color how to protest, grieve, or act. It's just not how I believe that I can respond. But I can be, commit myself to being an ally. And an ally, I think, in this way will work towards anti-racist policies. They will challenge the structures and the ontological being of whiteness and blackness. And they will do so, I think, without, I guess what I would say is, goals or needing the credit for that work. An ally studies the writings of people like Audre Lorde, Tenahasi Coats, Frank Wilderson, Jared Sexton, Fred Moten. These are the people that I have looked to, to read, and I certainly have tried to share those writings with others. And again, I would like to read just briefly from a book by Ibrahim Kendi, which is called "How to Be an Anti-Racist," because I think it sums up the concerns and thoughts I have for this day. He writes, "We are surrounded by racial inequity as visible as the law, as hidden as our private thoughts. The question for each of us is, what side of history will we stand on? A racist is someone who is supporting a racist policy by their actions or inaction or expressing a racist idea. An anti-racist, on the other hand, is someone who is supporting an anti-racist policy by their actions or expressing an anti-racist idea. Racist and anti-racist are like peelable name tags that are placed and replaced based on what someone is doing or not doing, supporter or expressing in each moment. These are not permanent tattoos, and no one becomes a racist or an anti-racist. We can only strive to be one or the other. We can unknowingly strive to be a racist. We can knowingly strive to be an anti-racist. Like fighting an addiction, being an anti-racist requires persistent self-awareness, constant self-criticism, and regular self-examination. Racist ideas have defined our society since the beginning and can feel so natural and obvious as to be banal. But anti-racist ideas remain difficult to comprehend, in part because they go against the flow of this country's deep anti-black history. As Audre Lorde said in 1980, "We have all been programmed to respond to the human differences between us with fear and loathing, and to handle that difference in one of three ways: ignore it, and if that's not possible, copy it if we think it's dominant, or destroy it if we think it's subordinate. But we have no patterns for relating across our human differences equals. To be an anti-racist is a radical choice in the face of this history, requiring a radical reorientation of our consciousness." Thank you, and now I yield the remainder of the time to Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. I want to begin by thanking the acting city manager, mayor, and my fellow council members for their statements today, and to all those that participated in the peaceful protests by the Black Lives Matters movement and to our PD. I also want to thank everyone, truly, truly thank you, everyone that took the time enough, cared enough to call in today and give us your public comment related to police reform. I want to echo what I've heard today and also what I've heard out in the community over the last week. The time for soft talk is over. We need to take action, and frankly, we're moving too slow in taking that action. As was stated by a public commenter, Helen Fillmore, a little earlier today, in 2016, after a similar national tragedy, Washoe County School Commissioner Dr. Angie Taylor and myself raised concerns about officer-involved shootings and police brutality in predominantly minority neighborhoods. Dr. Taylor and I spearheaded a task force with other regional law enforcement, Reno PD, Sparks PD, and the Washoe County Sheriff's Department to investigate the issue here locally. And the result of the task force was a community plan leasing in northern Nevada by the GWIN Report. It was a GWIN Report, an independent bipartisan think team, which was published in 2018, more than two years ago. The GWIN Report researched what we're currently doing and made a series of recommendations, including increased training for law enforcement, impartial policing, implicit biases, and cultural diversity, improved transparency, more community input, and more focus on de-escalation techniques. What I found, and what a majority of what we're hearing now from many of my community members have found, is that when the cameras went away and the protests died down, it was difficult to get some of my colleagues and some community members to continue to make these issues a priority, and I fell by the wayside. Much like my call to better diversify and recruit for our city departments, even more reflective of the communities we represent. So what I'm imploring, what I'm hoping, is that we live up to the statements that we're all sharing today and maintain this commitment even after the cameras go away and the protests die down. We have a general roadmap on how to make improvements. We just need to maintain our commitment to making these things happen. I also recommend that we have a status check on the progress of the GWIN Report as soon as we can, whether it's the next council meeting, the next time we have an opportunity to be in front of the public. Thank you for all those that have taken the time to engage. I constantly ask my community members to engage, and thank you to all those that constantly try and engage, not only today, but keep us accounted. Make us accounted for. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think we're having a little bit of a technical difficulty again in the chamber, so give me one second, and I'll be able to see if any of my colleagues wish to have the floor at this time.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think...
I think we've lost one of our members, but we still have a quorum. Can we...
If you'd like, Mr. Vice Mayor, we can continue on to our approval of the agenda at this time.
Okay.
We noted for the record, we do have everyone present.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to say, it looks like everyone is present.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item A4, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please? I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda. We may take some things out of order, but I'm going to leave that to the discretion of the clerk. One of our items on the redevelopment agency agenda, I think may have had to be taken out of order, but I'll look for now for a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve Doer.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember Delgado. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second.
I have one question, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just didn't know, usually our city manager will advise us if there's anything pulled off or any changes.
No, as I said, there's nothing that changed for this particular agenda at this time.
All right, thank you.
So I'll call for the question. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, approval of the minutes from April 13.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilwoman Breckus, a second by Councilmember Weber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to your consent agenda. At this time, it should be noted for the record that we do have public comment registered via our webinar from Janan Barkhudi.
Thank you. At this time, are there any items council wishes to pull for discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, please?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if we can just take your public comment prior to that, please?
Oh, thank you. I apologize.
That's all right. Then we have you off of mute on our end, and you may begin your three-minute public comment as it relates to the consent agenda items. Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, it appears as if we have lost her. She was on the call and then just dropped off. We're looking to see if we can, if she jumps back on. Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time then, councilmembers have not pulled any items for discussion, and your public commenter did not indicate any specific items in their registration for comments for council to read.
May I have a motion by the body to approve the consent agenda items, please?
Let's, let's, may I? This is Breckus. Let's give her a few minutes, maybe five or six to call back.
Yeah, we'll come back if she shows up. Let's get through some of the procedural minutia, please. A motion by the body.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Doer.
Weber, a second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember Weber. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We will let you know if the public commenter comes back on and we'll reopen the item. Transitioning to item C1, which is our public hearing for Mountain View Mixed Residential Villages. This item was continued from a previous city council meeting.
Okay, let the record reflect that the city council is opening a public hearing on item C1. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given. We received a letter of support from Dick Miller, a letter of opposition from an anonymous requester. Additionally, Al Delmu sent in a letter opposed. He's also available for public comment, and Nona Perry submitted a letter of concern.
Okay, I don't believe any councilmembers need to make any disclosures at this time, and I'll ask staff to come forward. I understand this item was continued, I think, at my request, or perhaps it was someone else's from last time, to give the applicant and the appellant, the parties who were involved in this planning decision, to come to some agreements. So I'll bring staff presentation, staff forward, and we'll see who is here from staff. Ms. Foose, I believe. The floor is yours.
Hi, good afternoon. For the record, Angela Foose, Acting Community Development Director. This request was before you on May 13. It was continued during that time. Both the applicant and the appellant have come together and come up with a new, some modifications to the conditions of approval. Both the applicant and the appellant are here. Maybe real quick, if you'll let me share my screen, I'm going to show you what the agreement was. One moment. All right. And can you see what is on my screen?
We can see a map, Angela. Yes, we can see your screen at this time.
Perfect. Thank you. So the, the planning commission had initially added a condition that they provided pedestrian access from this apartment townhome site to the adjacent single-family neighborhood to the west. And the appellant had concerns about the location of that pedestrian access. So the two went back, and they came up with a new access location. So the access on the north was the original condition. The access on the south is the proposed condition. That parcel that's highlighted in green is part of the adjacent property homeowners association. So that's a common open space parcel that is controlled by the homeowners association. This is the pedestrian access. From the proposed development, and it will connect to Summit Ridge Drive. And then from Summit Ridge Drive, the applicant will put in a sidewalk on the north side that will connect to an existing sidewalk on Summit Ridge. And that was the, the primary, I think, concern from the appellant. A second concern that they had was related to rock crushing activities. And we modified a condition or proposed modifications to one of the conditions that specifies any rock crushing activity has to take place on the very eastern side of this property, which is about 1,200 feet from that single-family neighborhood. We also specified the hours of operation that they can do the rock crushing. Again, both the appellant and the applicant are here and are in agreement of these modified conditions. Here before you now are the existing conditions and the changes in red.
Angela, I don't think that your screen has changed.
About now. Let's do a new share. Okay.
And if you could enlarge a little bit, that would help too.
Sure.
From 75 to something else. Thank you.
There we go. So highlighted in red are the revised conditions. The first one is related to the rock crushing activities. Again, the concern was the location of those rock crushing activities. It's specific to just during site development. So while they're doing their mass grading, there will be rock crushing. It's limited to the very far east side of the property, the farthest away from those single-family homes, and it's also limited to the hours of eight to five, Monday through Friday. That condition was already placed. The time of the rock crushing was already placed, but we added some specific language that it has to be the farthest away from those residents. And then we also modified condition number 17, which was the condition that was added by the planning commission. And again, we just modified the location of where that pedestrian access would be located and a requirement that the applicant also put in a sidewalk on the north side of Summit Ridge that would connect to an existing sidewalk. And with that, I'm available if you have questions. But again, we also have the applicant and the appellant, who I believe also had some information they wanted to provide.
Let's hear from them, I think. I don't have any questions.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it should be noted that we have Eva Seggerblum on, representing the appellant, and then Ken Crater, representing the applicant. Both are available at this time.
Ms. Seggerblum, would you like to start, or is there anything that we need to know at this point? I think I received some information from Mr. Crater yesterday, and I believe Ms. Foose did as well, but I'll just look to you and then briefly to Mr. Crater. As I understand it, the issues have been resolved.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. Hearing the city council's concerns and obviously the Reno Vista Ridge master property owner's concerns as to why the appeal was initiated in the first place, we have spent time with the developer, Mr. Crater, and we have come up with, I think, a working solution which addresses your desire for connectivity but places it in a better spot that will allow people from the new development to connect to the sidewalk, to connect to the park, but also doesn't go right into common area next to home in the Reno Vista Ridge area, and then also shoring up the condition about limiting the rock crushing to site development. So we are still working on the shared use agreement, but from Reno Vista Ridge master property owner's perspective, and this was approved by the board yesterday in their open meeting, we are in agreement with the new conditions of approval.
Thank you. And Mr. Crater, do you have anything to add before Councilmember Breckus makes a motion?
Yes, just two things quickly, because I think this is important for the planning commission to understand as they review the record. The new point of connectivity will actually be a 700-foot shorter walk distance to the park for the vast majority of people that live in our development compared to the condition that was placed on by the planning commission. So I'm very confident with that, that we clearly meet the master plan requirement for connectivity between the neighborhoods. And then also, the location that we picked out for rock crushing, there's a large earthen berm that will separate that rock crushing area from both the single-family homes as well as the apartment buildings. So we're, we're very happy with the solution that's been worked out, and I want to thank Eva for all her time and the board's time and working with us on this issue.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could just interject quickly before council moves on to additional motions and questions. I did just want to note for the record that we received one letter of support, two letters of opposition, and three letters of concern. Previously, I had failed to mention that Michelle England Parvin also submitted a letter of concern. Those have all been submitted to council on our part of the record. Additionally, we do have public comment on the phone in the Zoom call, so at this time I would recommend that we transition to that. Al Delmu would like to speak, followed by Jeffrey Holbrook.
This is Al Delmu. Can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can, Mr. Delmu. You have the floor.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to clarify a few things. My original opposition was to the condition that was placed by the Reno Planning Commission. So I do now support this new, the new agreement and everything that has been worked out with Ken Crater and Reno Vista, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Delmu. Next to speak is Jeffrey Holbrook.
Councilmembers, I'm, I'm just here to answer questions. I think we worked well together with the property owner's association to come up with a viable solution to the access. And we're excited to see the project move forward. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Holbrook. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no further public comment.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to say I am so pleased. I thank both Eva and Ken for their hard work on this, as well as the members of the community that have come forward. I think I did make the motion or seconded either way. But I, the concept of interconnectivity and ability to transfer and transport, I guess, through our community is, is a key element of our new master plan. And it's been very, very important to all of us. And so I'm just so pleased that, that you were able to figure this out and have a good development that people can be happy with, and that most people can access the park. It's really important, I think, to me. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and for taking the time to do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Breckus.
Yes, thank you. I have one additional question for Ms. Foose. And I'm glad the rock crushing location was in greater detail. I, I have a long history or recollection of the prior rock crushing back in 2000. And what a, you know, how much, how difficult that was for that major retract project. Ms. Foose, the, the one issue that I have and would like kind of to put it out there right now is this is a large property, and the development is only on the southern end, with the exception of the emergency access that goes up through the north end. That area, one would presume, that's contiguous in that north end, will come forward at some point for some form of development. What is that land, and will it be going to the planning commission again also in the future?
Yeah, the, the portion to the north, which is vacant, the piece that you're talking about that is adjacent to the single-family development, that is zoned MF14. Depending on what they come forward with, it could be a tentative map, which would go to planning commission if they decide to do a, a single-family development or a townhome development where they have individual parcels. Or they could be an apartment project, in which case they may or may not trigger a special use permit.
What about hillside development? Is the hillside special use permit on this one govern that area up there?
There is some hillside constraints on that northern parcel. They'll have to come in with a slope analysis when they actually do the development.
So this one did not include a snow analysis for that portion of that land?
It did, but it's not based on, I mean, there's no development project with it. So when they come in and they show how they're going to grade that site, again, to kind of meet whatever their project is, if it triggers an additional SUP, then we'll review it as part of the special use permit and planning commission approval.
Okay, cuts and fills and slopes. Okay.
Correct.
Well, with that, I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit with the revised conditions as presented on Ms. Foose's screen earlier.
Second, Dewar.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Breckus, a second by Councilmember Dewar. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Crater and Ms. Seggerblum. Very much appreciate you being here today.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to item D1. This is a budget update from our finance director, Debbie Lockner. At this time, we will move Debbie over to be a panelist.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item at this time?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we do not have any public comment registered for this item, nor did we receive anything online.
I think I might have seen comment from Jeff Church related to this item, although it was not entirely clear to me. Although it may have been directed more at the Financial Advisory Board and recommendations that they had made to the body, but I just remark on that for the clarity of the public record.
Thank you. At this time, Debbie, we will transition to you. And if you would like to pull up the PowerPoint on your screen and share your screen, you may do so.
Happy to do so. Good morning or afternoon, mayor and council. I will share my screen and we will get right to this. So what, at the last council meeting, we were requested to come back and, well, bring you an update to our budget. And we were requested to do this at every meeting you have until such time as you tell us that you no longer would like to receive such updates. So with that, we will begin. What we're going to talk about today is our revenue projections updated. We'll talk about the department expenditures. We will talk about the COVID-19 expenditures to date, and also an update on the, the costs of the riot. And then we also will show you where we have some savings in, that we've analyzed. And this was done prior to the, the riots happening. So some of those areas may be a little pressured now, and I will point those out to you when we get there. So our largest source of taxes is our C-Tax. We had been waiting for March to come in. March data did come in. We had projected a 25% decline in this revenue source. It came in at a 15% decline. We're still looking at declines in April, May, and June with an overall look at this, rather than being a little over $6 million, it's now a little under $5 million, or a little under $6 million. So it's flipped a little bit. We're still seeing or projecting a loss in this revenue source of a little over $5.7 million. This is the, the chart to show you. You know, as I always say, we, we give you numbers and we also like to give you a picture. And so this is really just showing that where our projections are, that's the dotted line. The solid line is the actuals to date. As you could see, that March was significantly below prior year, whereas we had been trending well above all the prior three years for the entire year until this happened. Room taxes, the other data source that we received, we have received March and April. And so for this data source, March was down 63%. April was down 91%. We're projecting May and June also to be down 90%. If they do, I mean, we, we would expect that they're going to really trend where April was. So with that, we're going to be about $860 million under budget in this revenue source as well. For the $2 surcharge, I'll just tell you, for the month of April, we, we received $0 for the $2 surcharge, which is the collected in the downtown area.
You said, this is Councilmember Breckus, you said 863 million. I think you made 863.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Dealing with a lot of, a lot of zeros these days, so 863,000. Thank you very much, Councilmember Breckus. This is the picture that really does show the decline of that revenue. Again, we were trending kind of up and down, pretty much average. And, and it had gone up in February. The bowlers were, they're not coming, you know. So I think we may have had revenue budgeted, assuming that we were going to get that, that pack of tourism. But, so we may have had this budget a little higher than our normal year. And we're going to see that significantly decreased. So overall, we, we pulled out some selected revenues to discuss with you. And you look, I mean, your eyes probably automatically go down to the bottom line, which looks like we're positive. So, but this doesn't include every revenue source. So C-Tax isn't in here, which is a $6 million decline, which actually splits it the other way. Property taxes will be slightly above budget. That is due to the fact that property taxes have a lag. We likely won't see a decrease in property taxes next fiscal year either, because by the time the pandemic came to play, we had already passed the lien date and passed the appeals period for the next year's property tax. Liquor licenses and gaming licenses, as you would expect, those are going to be well below budget. Business licenses and our percent of growth and our flat fee are both trending well above, well above where we were. And we will have to really watch that flat fee business license, because as you recall, that is an area where we will be providing some relief for businesses that were required to close. The other, you know, gas was trending well above budget and cable is trending well below budget. And that is, I believe, a result of people changing from cable to more streaming services as more of the streaming services get the shows they want to watch, then they're dropping their cable. And we don't have any kind of a franchise fee on those streaming services. So a little bit expenditures in total by department. So this includes salaries, benefits, services, and supplies. You can see every department is under budget. That is a direct result of us, you know, managing the hiring throughout the entire fiscal year. That, that's been a, a policy that we continue to manage is making sure that we are looking at the organization for every hire we make. And in addition to that, we did a purchasing freeze where every purchase in the city, every payment we're making is being scrutinized by the finance department to make sure that it is absolutely necessary to make that purchase. So we're trying to, to hold on to as much money as we can to get us through the end of the fiscal year. And if you look at the salaries and benefits, you can see council is right online. That's easy, because council gets a set dollar amount, and we're tracking exactly where we should be with, with that department. Neighborhood services looks like it's slightly over, and that is because a position was hired at a, at a step beyond what we budgeted. But with the retirement of a, one of their employees and holding that position vacant, that, that will rightsize itself. And it's just such a slight amount. Overall, their budget is still under. When you look at the services and supplies budget, we only have one department over, and that's human resources. We've looked through their budget. There is nothing that stands out to us as to why that has happened. And we need to just in, ensure that they don't hit above that 100% at the end of the fiscal year. But we do have other departments that are well under budget in the expenditures. And overall, what we report to the state is total services and supplies in the general fund that are not safety. Safety is reported separately. But if you look at all the general government services, and when you combine all those, that we will not be over budget. Wanted to talk a little bit about the council of what our current COVID-19 expenditures are to date. And this is, this is as updated as we could get. I think it's through last, like, May 25th, I think, is when we did the final analysis to get this done for council. But you can see where we are overall. We've spent $1.1 million in, in our city funds as a response. When you see the augmentation next week, you will see a lower number because some of those expenditures that are coded to COVID-19 were budgeted, they were budgeted expenditures, just not budgeted for that purpose. So we had to pivot and do other things. And so you'll see for, in the augmentation, a little under $600,000 as opposed to the $1.1 million. Our regional expenditures, the latest information we have is $9.8 million. We have been told that likely the state emergency fund will not step in and pay the half of our responsibility. So we are expecting that we'll pay the full 25% of our 35% share. So our 35%, 25% of our 35% share of $9.8 million is $857,920. So that's where we are now, but they are still spending money, so we will keep updated on that. They're, they are not sending us the bill, so we'll just keep it, keep it in track and, and look at how we're going to fund that at some point in the future. I know we do have some grants coming in that will help us with some of these things as well. Wanted to remind the council that in April, when we came forward, we talked about potential savings. And at that point in time, we expected about $4.9 million of savings in vacancies for the general fund. And a little under $1 million for the other funds. And in our services and supplies, we had said there's potentially $1 million there to help us get through that the end of this fiscal year and still be balanced. What we have is our most recent analysis, and we will update this because we did just have another pay period, so we're working on it. But at, through April 30th, we have shown that we have $8.3 million in savings in salaries and benefits just in the general fund. So this is a good, a good indication of how we have slowed down what we're doing in order to make sure that our budget holds. And, you know, when, when you go back to the, the costs of COVID, and I can tell you on top of that, our costs for the riot to date are about $1.8 million just for the first weekend. So between the pandemic and the riots and what's expected to happen through the end of the fiscal year, we're expecting about a little over $4 million of expenditures for emergency response this year. And I wanted to make sure I told you that. So in our services and supplies, we are seeing just under $1.4 million in savings. That will not be here at the, at the end of the year because we have been spending in response to the riot. So you will see in the augmentation next week, some money that we're pulling out of audited fund balance, our, our beginning fund balance was actually higher than we had budgeted for. So we will pull that beginning fund balance and augment it to cover the cost of COVID and the riots and, and hopefully not have to, well, we're not going to be hitting our fund balance to balance this year. We will be using the beginning fund balance, which was higher than expected as a result of our audit. By the, it was a little over $2.7 million, so that will help us balance the budget while responding to these emergencies. And that really is the end of my, at the end of my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Clerk, before we have questions.
This is Councilmember Breckus.
Hold on one minute, Councilmember Breckus. As I, there was a question asked about public comment, and I think that I'm told there was a public comment made that was not acknowledged by J. Colbit Clacell. And so I just want to make sure if that could be something that we track down and just add to the record as having been received. We'll go on to Councilmember Breckus. Councilmember Breckus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And I, I had to move. Hopefully you can hear me. First of all. Pardon me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, what's the nature of the augmentation next week?
That is the regular fourth quarter augmentation that we do every year to, to ensure that we don't go over budget and have to go testify in front of the state as to why we went over budget.
Well, what items, what's the, what's the most prominent items you're kind of juggling around? Line items, is that what it is?
Well, a lot of it is juggling around line items. And then we're also going to be taking the remaining city manager contingency and this audited fund, the beginning fund balance that actually was higher than, than we had projected when we, when we did the budget. We're going to use those two sources to pull in and augment to cover for the pandemic and for the, the riots, so that hopefully by June 30th, we have not overspent our budget. There's also addition, like you, you saw, there's significant salary savings, and that's also going to help us. Before the riots, we were looking at possibly, you know, somewhere between $7 and $9 million. The riots have added about. I mean, just the one weekend was $2 million. So we're, we're going to be augmenting to cover addition. So, we're going to be augmenting to cover additional response that may or may not happen through the end of the fiscal year. Whatever doesn't happen, that additional money will drop down into fund balance again. And we'll use it to help balance next year's budget when we come back in September.
Two more things, or three, actually. I was surprised that you didn't show drops in gas and sanitation, because I thought sanitation was going to drop quite a bit. You're still showing it growth.
Well, and again, we, we've received three quarters of the money. That fourth quarter is likely going to be a reduction, but we don't have the data yet. And so, we're still looking at it. We're, you know, we're doing our best with that. So, with the closure of the commercial facilities, then yes, we saw some reduction in what waste management was reporting to us. But then also with people being home and actually generating more, more waste, you know, that needs to go somewhere like big cardboard boxes, that might be propping it up as well.
And what about in the police budget? Has there been savings on special events in this last quarter that'll get us through the year?
Well, so that would be a savings in the special events budget because special events reimburses police for that. So the savings would be in the special events budget.
Okay. And maybe that can help parks then, which is also getting?
Well, it all combines. General fund is general fund, and so we have to look at it holistically across the whole fund and make sure that we remain in balance when we close out the general fund at the end of the fiscal year.
My last point, and I know because you're touching into areas where you thought you were going to have savings, and those are always going to go over, in my understanding, to, you know, the wants that we had beyond the salaries. And I was going to bring this up anyway. This isn't an issue of the earlier comment today. But I think that you all need to get in front of us what we're going to do with the RGJ building. Because you were proposing it, my last recollection was you were proposing a debt instrument coming to us. And I think the council needs to be front and center on that concept of a debt instrument.
So, we have, we're not considering a debt instrument at this point in time and would not consider it before maybe January of next year if things are better. What we have requested the capital projects team to look at, the money we have on hand, and if we could stand up the building with the money we have on hand. And that's, it's over, it's over $8.5 million of what we have on hand. And my question, and I just need to circle back. I think they've done most of the work, but then, you know, things happen, so they had to pivot a little bit. But to see if we could stand up the building and move the staff for the amount of cash we have on hand right now. And that is the expectation that what we're looking at is, we don't have any more cash for this. We're not going to take the cash out of the project. But that's how much we have to do a project at this point in time, and maybe we can phase it.
I'm asking the council to get all these big-ticket items that are kind of hanging chads out there on budget discussion sooner than later, just so we're all clear of what money is outside of services and supplies and salaries and where we have flexibility, and just do a check that these are still the priorities.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckus. Any other council members have any concerns, questions, comments at this time? I know it was for presentation only, so if there are none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Actually, no. Can we go back? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I believe we had public comment on this item registered. And so, can you welcome them into the chambers?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, we see that Jay Colbit Closell has raised his hand for a public comment on this item.
Hello, this is Jay Colbit Closell for the record. Thank you for finding this item. I was upset when it wasn't first identified. There's a sense in the community that we don't have a voice here. And, you know, we're sensitive right now. Just this week, we were supposed to have a community homelessness advisory board meeting. And it was canceled because the city of Reno staff or council members did not answer the phone when it was time for it to start. These, we need you to listen, and we need that to be actual action because we do have answers. This community has answers for this budget. What's happening outside right now, the sweeps that you're doing, like, there's lots of disagreement on how people without homes should be treated. But what there isn't disagreement and what there's a growing consensus about is that there should be a legal place to camp. And we project that that would save this city over $6.5 million in just personnel costs. We need you to listen. Your police forces are out there right now chasing reporters away from these sweeps that are dislocating 200 people at a time. Coit wins a $250,000 contract. NDOT is also spending $250,000 on a similar contract with Hess, and they did a sweep just the day before. This budget is not detailed. It does not address the actual solutions that this community is bringing to you. You need to start letting mobile home parks be approved. You need to let the private industry help solve this problem. You need to let the service providers in to work with people without fear of harassment. Jeff Church and I are on the same page with the solution. That's where we are right now. We both know about where we disagree. But we both recognize that the solution is to reach out to people to provide services, to actually have police that recognize the value of the people who are without homes. And those people are disproportionately people of color. I do not see a growing representation of Hispanic leaders in our community. I see them blocked out. I do not see an independent evaluation of police violence in this community, even though this has been a known answer for our community for over four years. I see a police chief who is also acting city manager. The job of the city manager is to negotiate payment contracts with police and fire. That is a conflict of interest. There should have been a two-year or longer sitting out period between those two appointments in that place. And it is not building trust. There are qualified people of color in this community that you don't consider.
Thank you for your comments today, Jay. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have no further public comment signed in for this item. As you mentioned, this is a non-action item today, so we will be transitioning to item G11. This is appointment to the Reno Arts and Culture Commission. Councilmember Dewar is the liaison to this body.
Councilmember Dewar, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Melanie Rudnick. So that would be my motion, Melanie Rudnick to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Breckus. All those in-
No, no, no. Well, second for discussion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Breckus. Before calling for the question, are there any discussion at this time?
Yeah, I am asking for a pause on appointments at this time. And I thought we were going to pause this one, particularly on bodies like this that have always had grant-fending responsibility that may not exist come July or August. And also, I've been waiting and asking and hoping that our clerk would bring to us an agenda item about all of our boards and commissions, which are obligated to meet under statutory authority, which are obligated to meet under RMC, asking the councils which ones we want to stand up right now. And I'm concerned about bringing on people in these uncertain terms to these bodies, particularly ones with grant-making authority, that it presents a presumption that there may be meetings being had. We all want our meetings to kick up again, but in these times, we may have to take on some and do some of the bodies' work for some of these. So, I don't know, I'm really asking for the council to hold off on taking any more appointments. And then we can prioritize which boards we really want to hear from and have the means to staff right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Breckus.
May I respond?
Sure.
Sorry. Oh, I just wanted to say for the record that these are unpaid positions, that the arts need to have an important role in our recovery moving forward over this next phase. There are many committees that are actually accentuating arts. They are our advisors, whether or not they spend money. They have applied for grants to come into our city so that we can put some unemployed artists back to work in revitalizing our community. So my motion stands. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Miss, Councilmember Breckus, do you have another comment?
Well, I just would like to know when the anticipation this body meets next. And also, the grants, okay, so there is some grant-making authority. That wasn't in the-
No, it's coming in, coming in.
And I understand that. I understand the first CARES Act gave a fair amount of money to the arts. But I also saw, just saw a budget report that showed basically zero money from Room Tax for Arts and Culture. So, I understand that. I just, I will support the motion out of respect for the liaison. But I also want to raise the issue to the council. For example, the tenants advisory committee, they were just getting their legs and they're done. We've heard a lot of people who maybe are thinking about the Human Rights Commission standing up. I know their chair is written out to us. So I just, I want to queue up the discussion very soon that we have about what our role, maybe a short-term six-month plan for our boards and commissions before we start doing more appointments. Thank you.
Councilmember Breckus, I want to just say that Councilmember Dewar and I had a discussion during our agenda briefing specifically about the tenants advisory board as well as the Human Rights Commission because ultimately there are several boards that I think could be started, and we need to get moving on them. And so I understand staff will be bringing forward those recommendations and addresses your concerns. At this time, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, moving on to item H1. This is an update on boards and commissions from council members.
Okay, if any, I don't believe any council members have updates, but if you just raise your hand to identify that you might. No updates here. I don't, Councilmember Delgado.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to speak on, unfortunately, the SEAB meeting last, at the last minute. I wasn't able to attend due to the issues that took place this past weekend. Several community members reached out. And it was one of those things, either reaching out to people that are really upset about what was the circumstances that were taking place or attend the SEAB. And so, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the SEAB. And there wasn't a quorum, so they did not take place. We're in a process right now of resetting the SEAB hopefully this month so we were able to hear the issues that were on the agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Delgado. And I think I received a copy of the Safe Camp Space Initiative presentation, and it's incredibly persuasive body of work. So I'll be excited to see what the SEAB takes up with it when they get to meet again. Thank you for your comments. Any other questions by council during this portion of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, it looks like we're now ready for adjournment of the Reno City Council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can interject?
Yes, please, thank you.
Before your adjournment, for general closing public comment, we received letters from Patrick Lima, Martha Kurnicker, Bridget Markward. Those have been submitted to council for the record. Additionally, we received online public comment from Britt Curtis and Emily Lee. She spoke earlier. Those have been submitted to council and are also included in the record. We have no one signed in for public comments, so you would be looking for adjournment of council at this time.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Delgado. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we are now transitioning to the redevelopment agency in which we are calling to order at this time. Roll call for the redevelopment agency is as follows. Breckus? Dewar?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
We can see Councilmember Jordan is on, however, she's not unmuted. Noted for the record, she is present.
I'm here.
Thank you. And Reese, I apologize, I went backwards order.
That's okay, I'm here.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, can we start with public comment? Any public comments signed in at this time?
We have no general public comment signed in at this time and no comment for redevelopment, so we will be looking for your approval of your agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Second, Dewar.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, a second by Councilmember Dewar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to item L4. This is a public hearing for Zero West Street.
Okay, let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on item L41. Yes?
Oh, go right ahead, finish that, and then I have disclosure.
Oh, I apologize, Madam Mayor. On my end, the screen is coming in and out. We're having some connectivity issues. Let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on item L41. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given, any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received. Additionally, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay, before staff presentation, can I get any council member disclosures?
I have one, Vice Mayor. At this time, in interest of full transparency, I'm disclosing the fact that I have a personal relationship with Jessica Sprouse. I understand she has been retained by one of the applicants as a consultant on the project. On this matter, I've sought guidance from our city attorney. I do not have any commitments, financial ties or obligations to her in any way or any capacity. Please accept this disclosure for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I know you said there was no public comment, but I'll open and close the public comment now and bring it to the staff for presentation.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have Jeff Limpert available for questions and presentation. Additionally, Lori Miles from the city manager's office, I believe is what department she's in, is available for questions. Also, Michael Pony is available, has been moved as a panelist, and is available to answer any questions council may have on this.
Okay, it looks like we already have one council member who's raised their hand. But Mr. Limpert, do you want to briefly situate us?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. For the record, Jeff Limpert, Community Development. This is the item that was heard on May 13th as part of 705 North Virginia Street. Since then, nothing's really changed with the overall disposition of these two properties other than the sales price did increase for Zero West. When it was previously presented on May 13th, we were looking at a sales price of $119,872. And we increased that. Staff went back to the representative for the, for the buyer and asked them to, you know, accept a higher sales agreement amount of $131,110, which represents $35 per square foot. And the reason being is that, given that range, we wanted to ensure that we went to the top end of the range so to make it, you know, to ensure that it looked as though we weren't giving any kind of special benefit to the, you know, to the purchaser. So with that, I can give a presentation to kind of bring everyone, you know, to remind everyone what the overall agreements were, or we can go right into questions.
Councilmember Breckus, you may go ahead and proceed with your questions.
So, the first question is, Mr. Limpert, because this is pretty, it was rather convoluted. This action right now is just about the Virginia Street project property?
Correct. So on May 13th, you know, the council just tentatively approved the overall structure of the agreement. But in order for this to be formalized, it had to go through a two-week, you know, noticing period and a formal public hearing. So, we did the two-week noticing and, you know, we're having the formal public hearing to formally adopt the sale of the property.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned the West Street property and the price on that, but that's not- that's not here. But that property, since you brought it up, we put a restriction on it that it couldn't be used for drive-through facilities, correct?
That's on 705 North Virginia. That's correct. That did get formalized in the agreement with Toll Development Company.
Okay. I, I've never understood why this property is part of the package. I'm just, it's kind of, maybe it's facilitating the ability for the North Virginia one to be aggregated by Mr. Toll because he's getting an option from West Street, but then why that runs into us to sell this property? I'm not, I, I, Miss Dewar brought that up before. I'm not really comfortable. Do we have an appraisal on this property?
No. So as presented before, we went out and got a broker opinion of value, and with that broker opinion of value, that's what set the range of the values that was presented to you last week. And again, initially, what was not formally approved but, you know, conditionally approved on this meeting today was the sale price of $119,000. But again, in order to make it, make it clear that we weren't giving any kind of special benefit to the purchaser, that was increased to the top end of that broker opinion value.
Well, I mean, here's something. The other one, because we're operating under redevelopment and economic development, that puts us in a whole new activity of property disposal. The other one is economic development, and with that, if there's financial assistance that runs with that property as it develops. This one, because it's an existing property, I think if the council is of mind that they want to dispose of it, which it sounds like they are, and I think they establish a need to desire properties to get that RGGA building, you know, they would earmark them into the RGGA building, I think we should be going with an appraisal. I don't think it should come under economic development. That wasn't really clear to me because this was the hanging piece of the other one. So I'd like to hear from other colleagues, but I'd like to see this go on a straight, transparent property disposal, the normative NRS exchange of property under an appraisal, and then it doesn't come with the leverage attachments of economic development. Because I don't think it is. It's a parking lot that's been a parking lot. I don't see it as part of an economic development project unlike the one that the other people brought forward.
Any additional questions by council members? Councilmember Dewar?
Yeah, just real quickly, thank you, Jeff, for putting that on the record. I was going to ask you about that. I wanted to understand the broker's opinion, and I wanted to understand this range, and, you know, it was, it was overall a low number. I'm not opposed to it. I agree. I think Mike probably brought up some interesting points about economic development versus redevelopment and those kind of things. But I'm, I'm fine to move forward, but I, I did want to get a very good basis for how we arrived at the price. So I don't know. Do you have anything else to add? You said you took the top end. When was the broker's opinion issued?
That was issued roughly two months ago, you know, maybe six weeks ago when we originally started the process. And so again, that broker opinion of value set a range of values of what would be acceptable. The initial number that was tentatively agreed to was in the middle, well, more, you know, three quarters of the range. But again, there was, you know, some concern from a staff level of are we giving benefit by not going to the top end of that broker's opinion of value? And so that's when we reached out to, you know, to the purchaser to ask whether or not they'd be agreeable to, you know, to go to the top end to make sure that it couldn't be conceived as though we did give some benefit to them.
And the only other thing is, I assume, and I wouldn't mind you stating this on the record, that the broker is very independent, has no relationship with this company that seeks to buy. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, it's Dixon Commercial Group. I'm not familiar that they have any arrangements with the purchaser.
Okay. Thank you. I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, Councilmember Dewar, I'll look to you for a motion.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to accept $131,110 as the purchase price for the piece of property in L41.
Okay, I'll second. Any additional discussion? Any other discussion at this time?
I'm not going to support. The other one I do support because I see an economic development fulfilling our policies. This is a straight property disposal issue to fulfill, fulfill the council's goal of disposing a property that's non-essential to build the police station reserves, and it should go under an appraisal, in my view. That's the best practice. I don't see a time emergency to this. I think we should be getting appraisals. And actually, I think it's cleaner and better for the property anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I just had one other comment. I, I am supportive of it because it does comply with our policy to sell land to adjoining property owners, which has been sort of a base principle that we adopted when I first came on council. So I'm, that's, you know, with that, excuse me, that's what adds additional support for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar. Councilmember Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I am supporting this motion because I do believe it's been very transparent. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with both my council member colleagues, Councilmember Dewar and Councilmember Weber. I'll close the discussion on this item at this time. The question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
I oppose.
Motion carries six to one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item is general public, or excuse me, this is updates from Redevelopment Agency Board.
I don't think we have any at this time, but I'll pause to see if my colleagues... No, thank you. Okay, the last public comment period, I understand there's no one signed in for that?
There is no one signed in for that. It should be noted that we did receive online public comment earlier in the day from Ananti Ali. Council does have the link to this, and it is submitted into the record.
Thank you. Now I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Who did adjourn?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Breckus, a second by Councilmember Delgado. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you are adjourned. This is a reminder, the next regularly scheduled council meeting of the Reno City Council is next Wednesday at June 10th. Thank you.